All right, I want to reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. And as we do, Ms. Aller, excuse me, can I have someone to certify closed session for us, please?
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley, and Ms. Aller.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young. Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. Item 3.03, approval of the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and to include the following six items. Item 7.03, which would be a discussion on social studies curriculum resource acceptance and purchase. Then item 8.03, to suspend application of policy IIAA for today's meeting. Item 8.04, Virginia, approval of Virginia studies. Our Virginia, item 8.04, approval of AP US history by the people. 8.05, approval of AP US government and politics, and 8.06, approval of AP economics.
And just for clarification, what was 8.03?
That was to suspend application of policy IIAA for today's meeting.
And what is that policy?
That is the policy, yeah, let me get the exact, sorry, thank you, give me just a second. Textbook selection and adoption.
Textbook selection.
And adoption.
And adoption, just one second. And so the motion from Ms. Cook is to amend our agenda and include 7.03 discussion on textbook review? Do I have that right? Okay, item 8.03, suspend application of policy IIAA textbook selection and adoption. 8.04, move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the Virginia Studies textbook, our Virginia past and present. Item 8.05, move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP US history textbook by the people. Item 8.06, which would be move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP US government politics textbook. And item 8.07, move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP economics textbook, do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, any discussion?
Yeah, if I may, I'd like to just sort of explain to the board and to the public the motion that I just made. Just by way of background, this board adopts its agenda at the beginning of every meeting for transparency and order sake, so that we know the order of business and there are no sort of unexpected motions. And so that's why this agenda, this motion to change the agenda so that we can go through and add these six items. And I want, I'm asking to add 7.03 to have a discussion about the policy itself, IIAA, and about potentially adopting these textbooks. We can't adopt them today if we don't amend the agenda. It is possible that we will discuss this item in 7.03 and then decide not to adopt them. So, or it's possible we will discuss this in 7.03 and then decide to adopt them. So, but in order for that to happen, you have to add all six items, even though five of them may or may not be a successful motion, if that makes any sense. So, that's why I'm making this motion to add 7.03 so that we can have a robust discussion as a board in public viewing. And then if the other five items to suspend the policy and to adopt the other four textbooks individually move forward, then they move forward, so I just wanted to explain that, and I hope that makes sense.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, I think I saw Ms. Ordigo.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, but haven't had time hearing you, I think, can you bring your mic closer?
I have a question, do we have to, we have to approve all of those items or none of those items? Or can we amend the motion to only adopt 7.3 discussion?
It would be all, would be all, I believe.
You may make an amendment, and then as the person who made the motion, if I accept that, then that would be the new motion. Or you can make a motion to amend it, and if I don't accept it, if you get a second, then we would have to vote on that amendment.
It's performatory, does that sound right? Okay.
Yeah, right, but I would just add that adding all six items does no harm, because let's say we discuss 7.03 and come to the conclusion that we do not want to adopt those textbooks, then, you know, the chair would call for item 8.05, AP US history, and there wouldn't be a motion. Or there would be a motion in a second and the motion would fail.
Or we could discuss it today and we could, we could add those items to next week when there can be public comment and having had discussion in public first.
Yep.
So, I would like to, I would like to propose an amendment to that motion to only, you, only amend the agenda with 7.03.
Okay, having a second amendment on the floor, well, let's continue discussion here, Ms. Young.
I have a question about 803, my colleague has recommended that for today's meeting, that policy IIAA is suspended.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have a clarity why that would be on the docket?
I'd rather discuss that at 7.03, if that's okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Well, as that's a part of your amendment to this agenda, it does make sense to answer the question, why are we including that before we vote on this amendment?
I communicated with our school board attorney today, and that was something that she suggested as an option that this board consider. So, that's why it's on the agenda, or that's why I'm recommending it be added to the agenda, but I do think it's worthy of discussion.
Go ahead, Ms. Young.
Okay, I mean, we're in the midst of a motion, but I do want to assert that this policy, IIAA, is our current policy. How can we suspend a policy that has been in place for years? And for the purpose of this discussion, we're supposing that we're.
To shed further light on it, as you ask, the attorney has given several potentialities around the textbook conversation, whether we should continue the conversation, and if we do, this board would like, would be going against our own policy if we, if we adopted textbooks under the way that the committee was previously formed, which did not, it was not formed by the board, it was formed by a committee that was put together by the superintendent, which has been the case for a long time, but again, two wrongs do not make a right. Now that we know that, we have a responsibility to adhere to our policy.
Can I respond?
I'm still speaking, sir, and we'll get to you, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And if we don't, we could make ourselves liable to suit. So, to prevent that, the attorney gave a suggestion, which was to, if we absolutely needed to, if time were exigent, we could suspend the policy. And that is kind of the best of a few bad scenarios. Let me get to Dr. Beers, and then I'll come to, back to Ms. Ordigo.
Just to make clear, under Roberts' rules, the board can suspend rules or policies anytime it wishes. All it needs is a two-thirds vote to allow that to happen.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to point that out.
Is there, is there a limitation on how long that policy is suspended, for, say, for an hour for us to discuss, and then it goes back into effect?
N B.
I don't believe there's any limitation.
I think we should set one.
With all due respect, this conversation is about amending the agenda, so I don't think we should get into the meat of the discussion until we get to 7.03. I think the question on the table is whether or not we're willing to add to the agenda the discussion, and then five potential action items, which may or may not happen in the wake of 7.03. And, so I don't think there's any harm in changing the agenda as it's, as I proposed. And Ms. Ordigo has made an amendment, and that has not yet been seconded, I don't accept it as a second, but doesn't mean, as the maker of the motion. But we have to then see if there's a second, and then see if that amendment succeeds or fails, and then take action on the agenda itself, would be my recommendation.
Ms. Young.
Well, I'll second the, Ms. Ordigo's amendment. Does this also apply to the regulation that goes with IIAA?
We don't take action on regulations?
Okay. I want to make sure I understand where we're at.
Okay, so we've got a second amendment, an amendment to the amendment that's been seconded, and that was to, if you'll refresh our, just to, just to have 703.
Was to have the discussion, to add discussion to our agenda tonight, and withhold any action items for subsequent meeting.
Okay. Any discussion on that second amendment?
While I appreciate that very much, and I, I would agree with it, were it not time sensitive in terms of being the time, being in the 11th month of the fiscal year. So that is why I want to go forward with all of the items, so, so that's.
So, can I?
Ms. Ordigo, and then it looks like Ms. Young again.
I understand the sense of urgency with regard to end of year funds, but we have a textbook budget line item for next year, which would cover all four of these books if we were to add it later, so.
And on that, if I can ask, I have asked this question previously, but didn't get an answer, I think we just didn't have an answer available for the textbook purchase budget for 23, 22, 23. Is there, are there textbooks or a, a, is there a need for that? Has there been something identified to purchase?
Yeah, there's been, there's a schedule of textbook review annually, and Ms. Ford, I believe, is somewhere around and may be able to speak to what's coming up next year. I know there's a schedule of adoption, so by not adopting these, we would push these into using that money for that, rather than the ones that are already being lined up for next year. So there would be a delay in the buying of textbooks by a year. And I believe, Ms. Ewing, it's about 150,000, correct? That's the line item for textbooks.
But we don't yet know what those, what that subject will be?
We don't know the subject, no, no, sir.
Okay, so it could be history.
It, I'm honestly not sure.
Ms. Young, oh, did I cut you off, Ms. Ordigo?
No, is the total not 204,850?
Sorry?
Is the total for the textbooks not 204,850?
Are you talking about in the budget?
That may be the overall budget amount, but the amount within curriculum and instruction is 150,000. Each school may budget a small portion of their allocation to buy replacement books.
I see, okay, thank you.
Ms. Young.
No, I have nothing more to say about this.
Okay, I thought I saw you. Anyone else? Okay, so.
So, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, if you vote yes on this, then you're only adding 7.03. If you add, if you vote no, then you're.
Then we take up the first, right, right, thank you. So, hearing no other discussion, can we have a roll call vote on the second amendment, which was to only add, Jen, item 7.03, to have discussion on textbooks, please?
Mrs. Ordigo.
Yes.
Mrs. Young.
Yes.
Dr. Beers.
No.
Ms. Cook.
No.
Ms. Hummel.
No.
Mrs. Hundley.
No.
Mr. Dowell.
Yes. Thank you. And to the original amendment, which I will try to get right, was adding to our agenda 7.03 to have discussion about the textbook review, textbooks.
Social studies curriculum resource adoption and purchase, yeah.
That. And then items 8.03, suspend application of policy IIAA textbook selection and adoption. Item 8.04, move to approve request for adoption and purchase of Virginia Studies textbook. 8.05, move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP US history textbook. 8.06, move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP US government politics textbook. And 8.07, move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP economics textbook. Just want to clarify, did I get that right, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion before we take a roll call vote? Okay, Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Ms. Hummel.
Yes.
Mrs. Hundley.
Yes.
Mrs. Ordigo.
No.
Mrs. Young.
No.
Dr. Beers.
Yes.
Mr. Dowell.
No. All right, so our meeting's agenda this evening has been amended to include, well, all those new agenda items that have been listed. Okay, let's move on to item 4.01, announcements and superintendent's report, Dr. Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today is Teacher Appreciation Day, and this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And yet, one week is not nearly enough time to truly express our gratitude for our teachers. Day in and day out, our teachers move mountains for our students and families. When we asked our principals to share a few words that best describe our teachers, one response really stood out for me, they are heroic. The everyday heroes, they are our everyday heroes in our classrooms, offering unwavering support to our students and building learning environments that encourage and inspire. Thank you, teachers, for your contributions to our WJCC family today and every single day. Also tonight, we want to thank, say thank you to a partnership through Dominion Energies Project Planted Program. First graders at J. Blaine Blatton Elementary School celebrated Arbor Day last week by planting a tree near the playground. Let's hear more from the experts.
I'm Jameric, I teach first grade at J. Blaine Blatton Elementary. We have had the perfect opportunity today to have these arborists come and tell us about trees and the importance of them, and reinforce what we've learned in the classroom, and to help us celebrate Arbor Day.
Are dogwood trees, is that our state tree? And the trees help us have oxygen to breathe.
We need to know.
Planting and adding to the soil and then watering, so everybody got to participate. Oh, they're just so excited to have the hands-on experience after having it taught in the classroom. Each time they come out to the playground, they'll get to see what they contributed.
What a wonderful learning opportunity, thank you, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Aaron, any reports from board members? Okay, we'll move on to public comments, Dr. Beers.
Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meetings. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration during their presentations. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and 30 seconds to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. If you also have written statement, a written statement, written comments, please, we encourage you to submit those to the clerk when you are finished. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
And our very first speaker is Robin Pavlosky.
Hi, my name is Robin Pavlosky, and I'm here because I took the time last week to listen to the school board meeting on April 19th. I am in favor of the board's decision from last week, I'm confused now by what you were discussing previously. I, I believe that the AP government book, getting rid of the entire curriculum. According to the executive order, number one, political indoctrination has no place in our classroom. Instead, the foundation of our educational system should be built on teaching our students how to think for themselves. Clearly, the AP government book from last week was promoting the very thing that the executive order said should not be happening. If you have someone who is part of creating the AP government book who has affiliations with BLM, how's this book apolitical? It isn't. The rest of the books need to be reviewed by parents and held to the same scrutiny that the speaker at the last board meeting did. We shouldn't be swayed by one-sided opinions, as was expressed by the Gazette. Not only is the book and most likely others political, it doesn't promote critical thinking. How could it? If you only present or encourage one side of an opinion, you don't allow students to make decisions for themselves. Is this what education has become? Our education system is a mess. This type of curriculum will further encourage divisiveness, it won't help our students, and we need better curriculum all around. So I ask you to really stop and think about this decision. You are not being transparent as a board, you are not. And we parents, you know, need to know about these things.
Thank you, Ms. Pavlosky, thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Manzi.
Good afternoon. Whatever textbook is chosen should provide a neutral and balanced foundation of civics. It should cover such issues as how our government is structured, how changes were made through amendments to the Constitution, or to court decisions or legislation. The overall goal should be teaching critical thinking skills, the ability to take a set of facts, apply them to an argument, and draw a conclusion. Issues like the Electoral College are legitimate topics around which students can argue a position. The textbook should not be asking why the Electoral College should be abolished, but whether it should be or not. Students should be encouraged and able to argue both positions. These textbooks presuppose positions on issues that should be subject to debate. Social issues are good, but this class and textbook are about teaching the fundamentals, so that when a student comes across a social issue, they are equipped with both, the factual foundation and the critical thinking. they are equipped with both the factual foundation and the critical thinking skills needed to analyze the social issue and not just know about it. Our school textbooks should be neutral on these issues. These books are not. We should be teaching our children how to think, not what to think. Thank you.
Ms. Manson?
And our next speaker is Ron Pavloski.
Hello, my name is Ron Pavloski. Governor Youngkin's Executive Order Number One, which is titled Ending the Use of Inherently Divisive Concepts. Many of us who reviewed textbooks this past month found that many of these textbooks contained ideas that were, uh, not in agreement with this executive order. Gillian Bayloo, Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction, was tasked with identifying and addressing inherent divisive concepts. She stated in her letter to the Secretary of Education and the governor that these concepts have become winds- widespread in the Virginia Department of Education and in Virginia school divisions, and we will need to be proactive around the state in order to comply with the executive order. Those of us that reviewed textbooks were being proactive, but we didn't have the time to submit all of our findings to the school board. The chairman himself here stated in the April nineteenth school board that after looking through some of the books, he could see that there might be information that could be construed divisive. We stood up and said it is definitely divisive. So we are tasking you, the school board, to also be proactive and based on the content of some of these other books, that they not even be reconsidered, and that also next year you'll give us more time to review and make comments so this excuse of time-sensitive will not be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pavloski.
Our next speaker is John Slukovitz. Slakovitz.
Slakovich.
I guess here we are again, two weeks later, and nothing's changed. You're revoting on a vote you already took. And I say "you" because you do not represent us, the people. We, we, the people, came here in an overwhelming majority to speak out against masking our children. One meeting, I counted twenty-one speakers specifically, eighteen of whom said to take the masks off the children, and you denied us our rights to raise our own children. This denying our rights under Virginia state law. Then you voted to vo- defy another law in which you chose to defy EO two, even though one of your members was missing and unable to vote. Where was the revote then? Now you continue to ignore us. In your last meeting, a hundred percent of the people that spoke up were against the adoption of these textbooks. And I'm back now, and nothing has changed. I don't know what secret meeting was held in which everyone's concerns were aired and discussed, or when you heard the public's concern and allowed their pers- perspective to weigh in on you. I realize you're all worried about the money, but I'm more worried about what you're forcing my children's young, impressionable minds on. And now that certain members of this board have had ample time enough to put pressure on other members to change their votes based on their own private agenda, now this has come. You have heard and will continue to hear from a handful of parents tonight who are dismayed at how you refuse to listen to those who claim you represent. There are also many people in the hall that were not able to make it here to sign in on time. Where is your allegiance? What are you supposed to? You're supposed to be the voice for me and my children, but instead you're an echo chamber for the superintendent's abuse of power. Two weeks ago, Mike asked for her resignation. I second the motion.
Thank you, sir. And I think something fell. Who do you have next?
Mary Slakovitz.
Hello, I am the mother of John Slakovitz, kindergartner at JBB. I came here tonight to thank you for voting against the textbooks last week, but now I changed everything I wanted to say because of what I just heard. A few months ago, when you voted for the kids to wear masks in school, I want to let you know what you did to my son. You mentally abused him, you discriminated against him, you segregated him. Talk about a liability. He had to sit six feet apart from the other kids while he had a shield on his desk. The other kids got to play, he got to sit six feet apart from them. You abused him. Thank God for Ms. Schleicher for making him feel loved and welcomed. I won't let you do that to him anymore. Last week, I heard someone say, you, there's twelve thousand students in James City County, and if they each have one or two parents, that would be twenty thousand parents. Tonight, we didn't hear from the majority. Instead, we heard from four critical parents. But a few months ago, you heard from hundreds of critical parents, and you did nothing. You continued to abuse our kids. You're the problem. Where was the revote then? Instead, you're sneaking in a revote to have the books, um, revoked on. That's not okay. You said you don't want to cause disconnect in the community, but you're causing it. Shame on you, our kids deserve better. Now we know you're having a sep- separate agenda trying to sneak in these textbooks. You're holding a meeting at four-thirty when you know parents can't come because they're still picking up their kids from school or at work. Shame on you. Nobody knew about this. I didn't know about it till I came tonight and listened outside, and you're trying to change the textbooks when you voted no. Vote for what's right.
Thank you, Ms. Slakovich. I have the clerk right here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Karen Burgsagel. Burgsagel.
Good evening, I'm Karen Burgsagel. I live in Roberts District. I was very disappointed by the school board's decision to not adopt new Social Studies textbooks. These were books that had already been approved by the Virginia Department of Education. In rejecting the superintendent's recommendation, I think that the board was dismissive, if not outright disrespectful, of its professional faculty and staff and their hard work. At the April twelfth work session, Ms. Hummel made this comment. We should never lose sight of the level of professionalism required in textbook review. I can only conclude that some board members did lose sight of this principle and voted to appease a vocal minority. The result being that the board quite literally judged a book by its cover. This is wrong, and now students and teachers are denied new textbooks. Also, at the April twelfth meeting, Ms. Ford acknowledged the issues with the method of review adopted due to the COVID restrictions that were in place when the process began. My understanding was that these shortcomings were being taken seriously and that the process would be evaluated and revised. I certainly support that happening. A transparent process is imperative for public trust. Thank you for your dedication to making our schools the best that they can be, and thank you for reconsidering.
Thank you, Ms. Burgsagel.
Our next speaker is Susan Franz.
Am I ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, good evening. I originally, uh, came to thank you for the decision that you made at the last meeting regarding the Social Studies textbooks. Um, I had seen the meeting online, was unable to be here last time. But now, once again, um, as Mary said, I'm, I'm going to have to say, I'm going to have to retract my thank you for that. And I'm also going to have to express my discontent at how, all of a sudden, a new vote is being taken, which I still don't even understand. Are you voting separately for the books or as a group? Because we're standing out in the hall, getting ready to speak, so we cannot even have a full understanding of what is on the agenda and what is being ready to be voted on. So, I express my discontent at that. I am hoping that somehow, some way, you will continue to keep that particular book out of the curriculum. And I also want to say that everybody says, oh, there's no CRT in our curriculum here. Oh, but we have SEL. Okay? We're not stupid. SEL is the new buzzword for CRT. Okay? SEL has a nicer sound, social emotional learning. Who wouldn't want our kids to be emotionally happy and, and taken care of and all of that? Okay? But it is a fake word. It is a deceptive word, and it covers up that CRT does exist in the curriculum. We're not stupid. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franz.
Next speaker is Ann Marie Smith.
Hey, good evening. Um, actually, I guess it's afternoon. I actually came to thank you guys last time for voting to, um, wait to fix the process on the textbook review, but I guess as we were listening, it looks like the agenda changed. Um, so I, I question if the vote was to revisit the process, how it is we've had time to do that and to actually assess how the process determined the selection of the books. So I would ask you to continue to do the right thing and to avoid voting on these books until we get a new process in place or that the public gets to revisit some of the concerns that we had about them to then really analyze whether these books are good or not. Um, and to be honest with you, some of them may be. Uh, the one in particular that I spoke about with the questionable cover, um, it, you know, in our busy day, we don't have a lot of time to go over everything. That was the one in particular that I thought was the most egregious, so it's the one I picked to talk about. I just don't think we've had enough time. Um, again, I would ask you that there's two books on that Social Studies, both by Savvas or Savvis. I'm not exactly sure how to say that. Um, again, I talked last time about how at the root of this company, there are people on their board who are reviewing their books related to CRT. So if we do not want to say, uh, to, if we want to be able to say we are not teaching CRT in our schools, then we need to really examine whether we adopt books by this company. And I would suggest that you remove those two books from the approval tonight so that you have time to analyze it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Uh, next speaker is Jill Piles.
Hello, no mask. Um, I'm Jill, I'm the mom of a teenager, and I hope to see on Wednesday the headlines. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the teachers and the staff who have carried us through this year, um, especially Archie Jespersen at Carline. I appreciate that. Um, I'm thankful we made it this, so far, and we're to the end. Um, I, when I was in high school in the eighties, we had a Bible study in public school in California at lunchtime. And my dad in the fifties in Stockton, California, had release time in public school. So these are my little Bible books. Um, I haven't heard anything from the school district about, um, there haven't been any after-school Bible clubs. So please let me know how to get that going, because we've had no response. Um, also, thank you for going through the curriculum content slowly and methodically and carefully. Uh, there's a lot of motions and passions on all sides, so set up voting, set up, um, committees. Our kids, our kids and families are very important, and not everybody can be here to speak, um, during the week we, work week at four-thirty. Uh, I have a friend who, outside didn't make it, um, said no CRT, and I have a friend who didn't make it who doesn't want, in high school, the sexual curriculum emphasis. And it'd be nice to get a note before we are taught, our children are taught these things, that, hey, in my, we're having some hot topics. Happy Mother's Day.
Happy Mother's Day.
Uh, next speaker is Alyssa Trambetta. Trambetta, sorry.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Trambetta. At its April nineteenth meeting, the board voted against adopting four recommended textbooks which would have replaced outdated ones. One, Government in America: People, Politics, and Policy, had drawn some criticism from several residents, one of whom suggested the book might be used as a kind of training manual to turn children into social justice warriors, which they associated with leftist ideals. Another resident found divisiveness in the book's illustration. Social justice is neither left nor right. It is justice for us all, and images like those on a textbook's cover are not divisive. It is we who sow division when we choose to politicize them. The text in question could have helped our teachers more effectively tackle America's sometimes thorny history and politics and thereby help our community to address the very divisiveness we're dealing with. History is about how we got to where we are today and how to build a better world out of what we've learned. We will never succeed in teaching our students what America is with outdated textbooks, much less should we hope to build a more peaceful society with them. Thank you to Vice Chair James Beers and members Kim Hunley and Kira Cook for voting in favor of the textbook's adoption. While I know SOLs are key this time of year, I entreat the full board to do all you can now to ensure the adoption of updated texts for all the courses whose recommendations were rejected last month. Our students need and deserve no less. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trambetta. Thank you.
Uh, our next speaker is Andrew Cusson.
Hello, distinguished board members. I'm a teacher and a parent, and frankly, uh, the, uh, last meeting's decision to not adopt the Social Studies textbooks was, um, insulting, in my opinion. Um, it's insulting to the teachers. This is a loss of man-hours, and not to mention it's a vote of no confidence for us, as if we can't clarify any bias in the textbooks that may be construed a different way. Um, that's our job as teachers. Our job is to clarify and put forth the best good-faith arguments on the side of a controversial issue. I'm an English teacher, I take care of that many times in class when we're going over persuasive writing. Um, it's also insulting to students, because it's as if you're infantilizing them, as if they can't entertain two point of views at the same time. I deal with many students, uh, with various skill levels, and believe me, they do not have a problem mulling over the issues and taking on controversial issues and, and understanding where bias shows up. My daughters are in elementary school right now. Well, one is going into kindergarten. Will they still have the same textbooks that we have now? Um, I just spoke with a colleague who's thinking about quitting this year, and it's frankly just demoralizing. I mean, and let's call it for what it is. Frankly, it's a campaign to derail and disrupt our business here as a school division. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cusson.
Mr. Chair, that is our, that's our last speaker.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. All right, and thank you to all the speakers that did come out. Uh, item six point zero one, proposed agenda items, review request for proposal number two zero two-two-nine-two-eight, Language Instruction Educational Program. Dr. Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe Ms. Knight is going to present this item this evening. Um, it's a resource for our English learners. Multilingual, multilingual learners now, now referred to. I think Ms. Knight is hopefully right here. Okay, thank you.
Good to see you again, Ms. Knight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This afternoon, I'm presenting the Request for Proposal for our Language Instruction Educational Program, also commonly referred to as LEAP. Because the contract for our current LEAP vendor expires on June thir- June thirtieth of this year, 2022, WJCC has conducted a request for proposals to support the continued implementation of a language instruction educational program that effectively meets the unique needs of our multilingual learners and their families while maintaining programmatic compliance with state and federal regulations. Members of our RFP committee included representatives from both the Curriculum and Instruction and LEAP departments. The proposals were evaluated along the following criteria. Vendor qualifications, demonstrated understanding of the statement of needs and the ability to meet RFP requirements, functionality of print and digital resources, proposed work plans that demonstrate the firm's ability to provide supporting professional development, and of course, the cost. The RFP committee ultimately recommends Elevation Inc. for our board's consideration. The cost budgeted over eight years exceeds $100,000 and is to be paid with Title III grant funding. That's all I have for you this evening, and I am happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. Um, Ms. Young?
Yes. Um, I see that this is a request for a language instruction. This is a program that we've currently been using, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And what does that include?
What does the program include?
Yes, I mean.
It is, um, I guess you can liken it to our VIEW, um, which is basically an informational repository or student information system. But instead of it being, um, for the entire broad scope of the district, it's narrowed to students in our multilingual learner programs. it's narrowed to students in our multilingual learner programs. And it houses things like parent letters that we send out that communicate information about WEATA test scores. It's a place where teachers are able to access LEAP teachers, that is. They're able to access professional learning on demand for them. There are activities that they can pull from, not necessarily formal lesson plans, but there are activities that they can use to include in their formal lesson planning. So it's more or less, again, a repository for student information that effectively supports the needs of our multilingual learner population.
Does this include curriculum and instruction?
No, there's not really any curriculum. It's more or less professional learning opportunities embedded in the program for teachers who support students in this population that they can ask, they can add to their current training plans.
Is it a record-keeping system?
It, it houses our WEATA access test scores. It houses, again, information related to communication we share with families. It's not a great book, if that's what you're asking.
I mean, I'm just trying to see how, I mean, it sounds to me more like this is professional development for teachers. Is that partly?
It's part of the system, but it's not our primary function or use for the system. It's just a place where we try to keep all of the information contained because there's some, several state and federal requirements that we have to be able to address and that a system allows us to have it in one place so that we can stay in compliance.
So can you restate the primary function?
Sure. It's simply a repository that allows us to document and hold information related to our multilingual learners. And again, that information includes primarily test scores, parent information letters. Again, teachers have access to professional learning through it, but it's not exclusive. So teachers have access to other professional learning opportunities from the platform, outside of the platform.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? No? Go ahead, Dr. Beers.
Fully support this. One of the things that is a little difficult in looking at a program like this is we don't really, there's really nothing to look at.
We can't hear you, Dr. Beers.
Dr. Beers, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Is that really, there's nothing? I mean, I know how much it costs each year, but other, what are the components? Are there, are there topics laid out? Or, you know, I, I know a lot about staff development, so I'm just curious how you do that.
I think Dr. Tillman is, is with us as well this evening, who works with the, the program and the teachers on a daily basis. I don't know. We want to get some insights on, on the content and what it, what it really looks like on the grind.
Yeah, yeah.
I know she's done a lot of development for teachers using this system and it works very well. Dr. Tillman, thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I just, um, um, it, it's, it's, I'm, I'm sort of interested in, in how the staff development gets delivered. Are there, are there, are there topics? Are there modules? Are there, how do you, you know, because I can't see it and I'm just, I just, you know, I like to know.
That's a fantastic question. And yes, there are several topics or modules that are embedded in the system. For the primary function for what's happening right now, there's our, the professional learning components are done asynchronously, virtual modules. Teachers can go into the system at any point in time, select a module of their interest and find out about an hour's worth of information. It also offers the, offers teachers the opportunity to have a practical application in the classroom and then offers them feedback on what they submit to the system. And there are about thirteen modules in the system right now, ranging from introduction to multilingual learners to how do you service our newly arriving students.
And I'm assuming these are online that they, so they could, so actually if I was really curious about it, I, I could actually go online and, and see what it, great.
Absolutely. I'm happy to set up an account for you.
Well, I just, I don't, I, I think it's really helpful staff development, but, and I also think it's, it's really useful to be able to use that, that kind of a format so that they can come in and out and, and it's, it's not like listening to somebody give a
And they convince their peers.
Not so good. Not that I've ever done that, but I, no, so I, um, I very much appreciate that so much.
And the platform is open to all educators who serve multilingual learners in the division, their LEAP teacher, their primary English instructor, but also other teachers in the content areas and classroom areas who serve them throughout the day as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Young?
Quick question. Do you have any ability to check in the system and see how many people actually access this professional development and which ones are the most, the most, you know, sought after?
Absolutely, and thank you for asking that question. Yes, the system does come with a full set of data analytic tools that we can use to see who's accessing, how frequently teachers are accessing the system. There's also a data analytic tool that allows us to see who's participating in the professional learning, to make sure that we're getting the most for, the most bang for our buck, to coin a phrase.
Thank you.
So we're looking to use Title I grant funds to support this over the next eight years. And just if you can help me recall what we typically receive in those from that grant.
Yeah, the Title III is a fairly small grant. Dr. Tillman, do you have that information on your fingertips roughly?
Yes, roughly we receive about between sixty-nine and seventy-two thousand dollars per year for our Title III grant.
Okay, all right. So this will be covered. We're fairly confident it'll be covered each year.
It will be, yes, that's correct.
Great, thank you. All right. Any other questions for Dr. Tillman or Ms. Knight? Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. Look forward to supporting this. All right, item six point zero two, review award for invitation for bid two zero two two one zero five nine, Toano Middle School Restroom Renovations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to be joining us for a short time this evening as we've got several items coming forward from operations. The first of them being the Toano Middle School restroom. This is the time of year when we're bringing things forward from the capital improvement plan to start the work during the summer, so it gets very busy for operations at this time, Mr. Snipes.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, and good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members. Tonight's placeholder agenda item, which all of these agenda items tonight will be placeholder agenda items for you, supports goal four of the strategic plan. And it's brought for your consideration and reviewed tonight, award IFB for the Toano Middle School restroom renovations. The project was budgeted in the CIP in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And the base scope of work is just to replace faucets and valves and, and lavatory equipment in our Toano restrooms. There are two additives, all ad alternates to this bid. One was to remove and modify the gym shower enclosures. And the second was to remove and replace all lavatory units. An invitation for bid was issued on April first of twenty twenty-two with a due date of May fourth, twenty twenty-two. And the superintendent recommends that the board review the information and be prepared to vote on the IFB on the May seventeenth meeting.
You mentioned a May fourth due date? Due date, that was to receive the?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay, all right, thank you. Any questions for, for Mr. Snipes on Toano Middle School restroom renovations?
Just, actually, it's probably a, a general question, but, because I know sometimes people in the public aren't exactly sure what some of the terminology is. I know what it means, but placeholder, could, could you just, you know, just quickly tell people with that, you know, what that means?
Mr. Snipes, do you want to jump in or do I?
Yes, a placeholder agenda item is presented to the board when we have not received all the information and we can no longer provide certain information until the board votes. So at, at the time this item is prepared, the bid opening process has not been completed. So that's why it's a placeholder agenda item.
Okay, I think, yeah.
And so the board gets to consider the, the project, how much it costs and what's budgeted at the first meeting. Then you'll have all of the information to make an informed decision at the second meeting. That uninformation only becomes public after the meeting for purchasing. That's the process.
I know, I knew that. I just think it's helpful for people to know that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any other questions related to Toano Restrooms renovation there? All right, so if we can move on to Jamestown High School, RFP two zero two two one zero five eight.
That is correct. Thank you, this is the school board chair. Again, tonight for your consideration review is the request for proposal for architectural services for Jamestown High School cafeteria expansion. And this project was approved in the FY twenty-two year-end spending plan. The proposed cafeteria expansion will expand the existing cafeteria space by about seven thousand square feet and will meet all building codes upgrades and for fire separations. The scope of work will include, for the architect will include program and schematic phases as well as developmental design phases and construction document phase. Bidders will be evaluated based on the criteria of their experience, the demonstrated ability to provide the services and the depth and breadth of their experience and how they have performed on projects such as these in the past. A request for proposal was issued on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two with a due date of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Again, this funding was approved in the FY twenty-two year-end spending plan in the amount of two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And the superintendent recommends the school board review the information and be prepared to vote at the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Yes, Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is very exciting to see on the agenda. I, for the last, for the entirety of my time on the board, this has been needed at Jamestown. And we were going to do the cafeteria expansion and then we pulled back to decide to make it part of all of the high school expansions to, to combine the projects for, to be fiscally conservative and wisely use taxpayer dollars. But then when we decided to do the Lafayette Building nine hundred first instead. So anyway, this has been on and off again for many years, so I'm excited that it's moving forward because it's been needed for, for a long time, probably a decade or more. So anyway, that's all. No questions, just excitement.
Dr. Worley would concur.
Just excitement. Yes, I'm sure she would.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Dr. Beers?
Approximately, how many additional students will that be, will that space allow to fit in there?
I will, I will get you that information.
It shows seven thousand square feet.
Seven thousand square feet. I wouldn't, I'm not quite sure how many students.
So yeah, so it's really, they can really, they can, we can spread out. They won't be on top of each other.
And if Dr. Worley was here, she may be able to provide you, but you have to, that is the same size as the current cafeteria, so you're doubling that in size, so.
And long overdue because the cafeteria is very crowded in Jamestown and this school. And plus the, the students come into the other high schools, they've got a meeting place in the morning right in the center of the school in both War Hill and Lafayette. And the cafeteria currently doesn't allow Jamestown students to have that gathering place in the morning where everyone can actually be part of it. So with that additional space, it's really going to make a, a great difference for the students who go there.
And is that pushing into the courtyard? Is that, is that?
Apparently where there's a courtyard, there's, there's grass right next to the cafeteria. That is where that will be.
The entire courtyard goes away?
Uh, yes, the entire courtyard.
I was just curious.
Cut down on the grilling that happens out there.
Goes your green space.
I have a little bit back near the gate, but not much.
All right. Anything else on this? We'll go on to six point zero four, request for purchase to park and play structures under Omnia Cooperative Contract two two zero two zero two.
That is correct. Tonight's, uh, this agenda item supports goal four of the strategic plan. And it is to, for your consideration for review of the request for purchase for what we are calling outdoor learning structures. The RFP soliciting proposals from qualified firms to design, build, concept, to produce detailed designs, construction drawings, and specifications and contract documents. It's, it will be at fourteen of our schools. These shade structures will be at fourteen of our schools. They are prefabricated, high-quality engineered shade structures that will protect students from, of course, nature's elements, SUV, SUVs, sun rays, heat and rain. So the, there are fourteen schools and those fourteen schools exclude Jamestown and Matthewelli at this present time. And they were not requested from the, from the principals for those, for those schools. The funding was allocated in the American Rescue Grant Plan. And the superintendent recommends the school board review the project information and be prepared to vote at the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Yes?
All right, so that begs the question because tomorrow, parents from two schools are going to be calling. So could you help us understand why Matthewelli and Jamestown are not recipients of, of this?
Jamestown is looking forward to it, it's greatly expanded cafeteria and didn't put in a request for the outdoor classroom at this time. Doesn't mean to say they can't later, but, and also we're concerned about the architectural review at Matthewelli.
Yeah, I imagine so, yes.
And so the, the chance of having that there would be limited, I'm sure.
Right, 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 okay. Understood. Thank you.
Any others? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Snipes. Is six point oh five yours as well?
That is mine as well. We have a couple more.
Yes, sir.
And this is our annual pilgrimage to you. So again, tonight for your consideration review is the, the award, the invitation for bid for War Hill High School Auxiliary Gym Edition and Interior Refurbishment. If you recall, on May fourth of this year, you awarded the design to HBA Architects and they have been bringing forth information to you on those updates each, each month up until January. The project consists of an addition at War Hill, which is an auxiliary gym. And the gym is approximately twelve thousand two hundred and forty-five square feet and will be connected to the existing high school through two new fire-rated doors. And it will also include a multipurpose room. The interior refurbishment of the school, which is approximately two hundred and forty thousand square feet, will replace finishes and floor finishes in classrooms and in hallways. Again, this will, the school, the superintendent is asking you to review the information and be prepared to vote at the September, excuse me, at the May seventeen, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you. Can you help me understand why the aux gym addition and the interior refurbishment are put together as opposed to separated? Because they were separate on that CIP, correct?
They are separated on the CIP. Our purchasing, in discussions with our purchasing department, they felt we would get a better bid environment if they were together so that they could be bid on at the same time.
Okay, so you can combine CIP items without an issue, okay?
Yes.
We'll manage the, the project separately when they come in, even though they're being bid under the same thing and done by the same company potentially. I believe, Ms. Yuan, we will manage them as two separate projects because of the CIP.
Right.
Okay.
It will take longer to finish than the other.
Sure.
They will definitely, it will definitely have to be managed separately.
Thank you.
Great question. Any others? All right, Mr. Snipes. Um, six point zero six, area refurbishment.
Zero six also supports goals for the strategic plan. And it's for the, uh, review and information for bid for the interior refurbishment of Norwich Elementary School. As you are aware, school refurbishments are ranked yearly according to priority and condition. And a typical refurbishment includes new paint, carpet, and tile throughout the school. This is the intent of this proposal to result in the competitive negotiation of a fixed contract price for these services. The scope of work for the project will include, but is not limited to, removal and replacement of floor finishes, wall bases, wall finishes, and door frame finishes. We'll also be replacing the gym floor. We will be refinishing restrooms, including valves and flush handles. And we will do some lead paint abatement will be required if they find it. A request for proposal was issued on March seventh, twenty twenty-two with a due date of April fifth, twenty twenty-two. As I said previously, this is a placeholder agenda item. And funding for this project was in the capital improvement plan for the amount of six hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars for the interior refurbishment, eighty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars for the gym floor, and six hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars for restroom finishes and fittings. The superintendent recommends that the board review the information and be prepared to vote on the Norwich refurbishment at the May seventeen, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Ms. Young?
Yes, Mr. Snipes. And here I see there's fifty-eight thousand four, two hundred and forty-five dollars for the gymnasium floor. That is for the complete replacement of the floor?
Yes.
Currently, how old is that floor? Is, is it been there since the school was built?
No, it has been replaced since that time. I could not tell you when though, but it has been replaced since.
We, we can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'd just like to take a moment and say thank you to our funding partners. Over and over again this evening, we're saying, we're seeing that it's funded through the capital improvement plan and that, uh, it just, again, shows the commitment that our funding partners at the, at the county and city have for the level of instruction and the need that we have here at the school division. So thank you to all of our, our partners, the county and city level. And to Mr. Snipes for all of your work.
That's what I mean, it's the guys out there.
All right, item six point zero seven, Omnia Partners Transportation Cooperative Contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe Mr. Keever is going to leave it off on this one and Mr. Snipes will be involved as well. Not sure who's going first.
Well, I can start off on the agenda item and then pass to him. So do we the initial agenda item, if you prefer?
Yes, sir.
The agenda item board or would you?
Go ahead, Mr. Snipes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So again, this is a request for proposal, request for purchase to Omnia Partners Transportation under So again, this is a request for proposal, request for purchase to Omni Partners Transportation under Cooperative Contract number R one nine zero four zero one. And you will know this as our ALC services that we, that you approved last year. This request is to, for select students in our school division, as is previously stated. WJCC currently has twenty-eight driver vacancies. And without contract support, we will be able to support efficient and timely transportation to all WJCC schools. The Transportation Department and our routing vendor, TransFinder, have performed numerous studies that provide the most efficient and optimal solutions for people transportation. And the most recent study in optimization showed a deficit of those twenty-eight CDL drivers to accommodate the services currently offered. One of the recommended solutions was to contract out some of the transportation routes. And contracting those routes would allow the division to use the current WJCC bus drivers that were assigned to what we call our outer zone routes to be used for our internal K through twelve zone routes. The estimated cost for the school year for twenty twenty two, for twenty-two, twenty-three is one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And a budget transfer is requested of eight hundred thousand from transportation salaries and benefits contracted services. And the remaining funds are four hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty allocated under the American Rescue Plan. And as.
To substantiate the, the request and to give the board just a little bit of background knowledge as, by way of reminder, and then talk a little bit about planning for twenty-two, twenty-three. We did put a couple of brief slides together to help further explain the request.
It's singing a nice song.
There we go. I'm not sure whether I advanced that or someone back in the back advanced it. But nevertheless, in July of twenty-one, the board received a request from administration and subsequently gave authorization to contract services for select students to the tune of approximately one point one million dollars. You voted on that in the middle part of July. That need was related to, as Mr. Snipes mentioned, twenty-eight unfilled bus driver FTEs at the time. And our belief that there was a total inability to support operationally transporting students to and from school on a daily basis. Once we received approval, once we received approval from the board, Transportation and Student Services worked to determine specific students who may be best served via the contracted services. And initially, seventy-two students were identified for that model. I think it's fair and safe to say that early implementation of the contracted services was a challenge. And it was a challenge based on the timeframe and the timing of it. It was based on communication gaps and the idea of change in general. That notwithstanding, Transportation and Student Services worked tirelessly at the start of the school year with families and the vendor to address every single concern from our perspective that was brought forward. We want the board to be aware and the community to be aware that currently we are serving fifty-seven students in the contracted services model that are being transported to and from school, thirty-four elementary, fourteen middle school, and nine high school students. Before I transition into the next slide, I, I do want just to remind you that with the approval of one point one million in July of twenty twenty-one, that approval was not to exceed. We have studied on a weekly basis the expenditure and the total amount that we have expended at this point will leave us particularly close to the one point one million dollar threshold that you approved in July. In all likelihood, we will be revisiting a request with this board, perhaps at the next meeting, at the latest in the June meeting, to authorize an additional several thousand dollars to ensure there is plenty of room for us to be able to finish up the contracted services from the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Just for your own knowledge, we're averaging approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars per five-day week in expenditures. As we began the planning process for twenty-two, twenty-three, we critically examined all of the aspects of our transportation system, many of which I will speak to in a few minutes in another presentation. We did utilize the TransFinder company to help us review our routing and efficiency scenarios. This spring, we also sought parent and community, excuse me, parent and family feedback on their satisfaction with the contracted services that are being provided. Nineteen respondents participated in our survey, which is approximately thirty-three percent of the participants. In general, I think we can indicate that there were, there was agreement around how we and the extent to which we were able to address questions and concerns in a timely manner, satisfaction with the staff and vehicles, and then overall satisfaction with the service. I would say, again, generally, there was positive feedback. The seventy percent piece, just for, for your knowledge, thirteen people responded yes, that they were satisfied with the service. Four indicated they were neutral, and two indicated that they did not agree with or appreciate the service. That notwithstanding, every single phone call that has come into transportation, we have attempted to address and, and respond to parent inquiries because we know that this has not been the norm in terms of transportation, but we want to make it as, as strong as possible for all involved. There's a projected need, and that's part of the reason we're with you this evening, for contracted services to support our operations in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The TransFinder review suggests that we will be approximately twenty-five bus drivers short next year, despite our efforts over the course of this year to hire, retain, attract, bring on additional drivers. Utilizing the contracted services will allow us to recoup ten or eleven drivers who would normally be driving these specialized runs back into the generalized transportation fleet, thereby transporting more students. And finally, as Mr. Snipes mentioned at the end of his piece, the funding for this request will be through budget transfer from the transportation personnel budget with those currently unfilled FTEs, as well as a use of ARP grant funding. At this point, Mr. Snipes and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen? Where do we start? Anyone? Ms. Young.
Just doing some math here. So according to, you can correct me if I'm wrong, so we're approximately spending four hundred and ninety dollars per student for, for weekly services for these contracted services?
I couldn't do the math that fast in my head, but.
I, I think that's entirely possible, Ms. Young.
I mean, how much does it cost? I mean, I know running a regular school bus, these, these are students that mostly are special needs students, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. There are, there are a, a number, some number of students who are McKinney-Vento students as well. The, the challenge for us organizationally is not in the, the number of buses that we have as a school division. It's in the number of drivers that we have to be able to transport the students that are in our care.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
It's studying.
Ideally, we would have the drivers and not have a service outside of, of WJCC schools. But we, we are unable to keep and to retain the drivers. And every time we hire, we lose some, and so we're still drastically short of drivers, and, and will be again next year.
So the contracted services provide, the company provides the drivers, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
They provide the drivers and the aid which goes along if needed through the IEP program, IEP for the student. We started out last year with ninety drivers, and we ended up now, I think, with a hundred and one through with, with hiring and bonuses and, but you also lose them, so that's why we're still critically short.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Summer?
So it's, it's not just the drivers that we're having problems, it's the aids that go with the drivers, is that correct?
No, not specifically. It's more we need to find the drivers to be able to transport students.
Okay, but these drivers come with their own aids, is that correct? These contracted drivers come with their aids, or do they use our aids?
They hire, they hired, they hire aids for them, for those, they hire their aids.
No way that they could use our aids?
In instances, they have. If their aid was out, we have, they have used our aid and have given us credit for that.
I was just trying to see if there's any way to.
Yeah.
A few cents here.
This is monitored really closely. I mean, it's, it's daily. If a run is not completed and a student, student is absent, we get credit for it. It's monitored on, on a daily basis, and it's been a big undertaking for, for the undertaking.
And if you, if you, and if you recall, we still have aids that we use on our buses as well. So it's, it's not like we don't, we have aids just sitting around. Our, some aids are also used on other sped runs as well, so it's not.
That was going to be my follow-up question. What are we pulling an aid away from in those instances that?
If, if, if we can, because we can then put one of our office staff on one of our internal buses, and we can use an aid in their vehicle, which we try not to do, but that's in an instance where it's just an emergency.
And, and to, to follow along that explanation that, that Mr. Snipes just gave, he, he indicated transportation office staff who then is not available to answer calls from parents and community are potentially serving as aids to ensure that we get students to and from school. That's also extended to members of the, the transportation office staff driving school buses and doing routes. And I, so, so one of the pieces that I've observed over the course of the last year is just incredible tireless, selfless work from the transportation team, doing almost whatever it takes to get students to and from school on a daily basis. And genuinely, there are days that we are running late. And, and I'll, I'll speak to that in a couple of minutes in, in another update. It would be our goal to be a hundred percent on time every day. Because of the number of drivers that we are short, mathematically, time, distance, it's simply not possible. And one of the ways that we're going to be as operationally and organizationally efficient as possible for twenty-two, twenty-three is to continue with the contracted services. There are some other tweaks and shifts that we're going to recommend and share with you in a few minutes. But our team has worked day and night to try to ensure the students are at school on time when it starts and picked up as close to the dismissal bell as possible and delivered home safely.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, how long is the American Rescue Plan grant going to run?
It runs through twenty-four, September twenty-four. Is that correct, Ms. Ewing?
I think so. Yes, that's correct.
So that four hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, at some point, is not going to be there.
That's correct. That's correct, sir. And some, and Dr. Beer, some of the things that, that Mr. Keever is going to talk about tonight are some thoughts moving forward of how we can become more efficient and, and eventually trim down these services. Because you're right, the grant will not always be there.
I'll wait.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you.
And then Ms. Young.
Yeah, I just, I understand for operational purposes why we need to support this. But I hope it's always our goal to bring this in-house as fast as possible. And I'm looking forward to using next presentation, which I think will inform my thinking about this part. But yeah, I don't, I don't love it. I don't love contracting out because I like the people who are serving our kids to be part of the WJCC family.
One of, one of the reasons you saw those numbers reduced from seventy-two to fifty-seven was because we were able to use some of our, what we call our white fleet vehicles to bring some of those students back. And so that's why they, it decreased. That's why those numbers decreased. So wherever we can, we are trying to bring them back in-house.
Ms. Young.
I just had a question about them again, to Vento students, are those Vento, Vento? Are those students, when they're provided transportation, is there also an aid on those vehicles?
No, not unless they require an IEP. Many of the McKinney-Vento students are required to, we're required to provide transportation.
Right, and I do understand that.
It's not necessarily an IEP associated with it.
Right, so if they're not on an IEP, there, there isn't necessarily an aid provided. Okay, thank you.
My only question, and many of my questions were asked and answered to those two, I think, that responded and said, no, I'm not satisfied. Are they still using the service? Do they go a different route?
They're still using the service.
Service, okay. We're still building a relationship there.
Attempting every day to build that relationship.
Because I, I think back to when we started this new process, and I think that was probably one of the bigger hurdles that we just had to head on was the relationship piece with the driver and potentially an aid and the familiarity, the need for familiarity for some of these students.
No question. And I, I think based on the timing that as things unfolded, you, we approved this as, as an organization in the middle part of July. We worked for that month, probably the second week in August, to identify the students. And genuinely, the vendor didn't necessarily carry forward the communication plan as discussed. So we came back around as a school division to try to mend those fences and repair those relationships. But I, you know, full transparency, the beginning was rocky. And I think we have steadily improved from the month of September into where we are now.
All right. Any other comments or questions? We'll move on to item. Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Mr. Keever. Seven point zero one, update on WJCC transportation services.
I believe Mr. Keever and Mr. Snipes are going to hang with us for a little while. Wanted to give you an update on some thoughts about next year and where we, things we have to consider with the TransFinder report and, and where to go with transportation next year. And I think Mr. Keever is leaving, leading us off this time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening again. As we talk a little bit this evening about this presentation, there are three primary facets. One, want to just remind you of some of the WJCC transportation services by the numbers. We, we throw numbers around quite a bit, but I want you to know what those numbers represent. Additionally, over the course of the month of February and into March, we utilize the services of TransFinder, who's our routing software expert and company, to really look at our routing efficiencies and optimizations and make some recommendations to us for how we can continue to get better organizationally and operationally for our students. I want to review those findings with you and then talk about our plans for twenty-two, twenty-three, given our current staffing scenario, and also share some of the ideas that we're thinking about for twenty-three, twenty-four. By the numbers, Williamsburg James City County encompasses a hundred and fifty-five square miles. And our school buses travel two point one million miles each year. Approximately seventy-six hundred students are routed for service. That means that they are actively in our computer, that we have a stop for them or a place to get on the bus in the morning and a place to get off the bus in the afternoon. We currently operate a four-tier bus system. Depending on with whom you speak and where you look, those tier scenarios are called a little bit different things. But we are going to do our best to get to tier one, two, three, and four. High school is one, middle school is two, elementary, three, and then elementary four. Slight bit of confusion there, but we're going to continue to work forward on that. There are sixty regular education drivers, six, zero, regular education drivers. Thirteen of our current drivers are designated special education drivers. Thirteen of our current drivers are designated pre-K drivers. And then we currently have nine drivers that go out of the division for services. They'll drive to New Horizons. They'll drive to Newport Academy and some of those kinds of things. TransFinder gave us four primary categories to consider in terms of our routing and efficiency. And one of the first pieces they encouraged us to look at was our ridership data versus bus capacity. Our buses have different capacity numbers based on the size of those buses. And then each of those buses is routed for a particular number of students. TransFinder did suggest that there was additional capacity on our buses available for students to be routed onto. And on the surface, that sounds like a great solution. Just put more students onto the bus. The, the retort to that, as we began to look at it more carefully, was that the more students that go on the bus, the longer the routes may take. The earlier the, the route may start, the later the route may go. And/or then in the afternoon, are you able to get from, from the high school delivery to middle school delivery to elementary delivery? So where possible, we would look to add additional students into the ridership data on particular buses without elongating our current runs. So that it was great that we learned this information from TransFinder. However, we need to be particularly careful that we not have students on buses for sixty minutes, seventy minutes, ninety minutes, based on sheerly putting more students onto the bus. So that was one finding they had and, and one piece that we're going to continue to look at. The review routing efficiency to include home to stop. Current school board policy indicates that at the elementary level, your home to stop walk is a half mile. That you, at the secondary level, your home to stop walk is a mile. In just a second, I'm going to show you what our averages are as a school division. We are particularly generous based on the data that we have. But some of the challenges that we have within our community are abilities for stops to be placed relative to sidewalks and traffic scenarios and, and egress to and from that stop. So we, we will continue to look at that, and I'll share some specific data there. TransFinder suggested we consider looking at a transportation pause for non-riders. The idea there being if you, as a student, don't take advantage of or utilize transportation for. For five consecutive days or ten consecutive days, we would pause your ability to ride the bus until you requested. To be unpaused, not that we would withhold the transportation from you, but you have not demonstrated to us that you're utilizing the service. As such, we would not continue to count you until you came back to us and let us know that you needed a ride. And then the fourth area was the reviewing of our tier times and the placement of levels. Um Trans Finder made some specific recommendations based on our staffing levels and our tier times. For how we might approach ways in a more efficient manner. Speaking to the home to stop data review, uh at the at the elementary level, they're they're close to four thousand stops. Uh the distance in school year eighteen nineteen and the average distance was a point one miles. That's that's gone up to almost a quarter of a mile, well within the policy limitations. At the middle school level, uh they're close to two thousand stops, the the walk to stop has has increased slightly. Uh not quite as much at the high school level.
Kids at the upper levels are walking less far than kids at the younger levels right now, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Based based on the averages and based on the plotting of the routes, that is correct. Our desire would be to increase the distance of walk to stop where safe and practical to do so. And meet the current policy requirements of half a mile at the elementary level and up to a mile at the secondary level. More pronounced would be specifically looking at the creation of non-transportation zones. As an organization and non-transportation zones would be designated areas near a school that would not. Where transportation would not be provided based on the proximity to the school. Uh and I'm going to to show you some examples of what that may look like as we continue to review and consider this. At the secondary level for twenty two, twenty three, and then potentially at the elementary school level for twenty three, twenty four. So for instance, developing a non-transportation zone would be simply drawing a circle around the school. And making it at and at the high school level, it could be a mile and at the elementary level, it could be a half mile. And then determining all of the students within that zone that subsequently would not be afforded transportation. Transportation becomes the responsibility of the student or parent in a non-transportation zone scenario. As an example, at Jamestown High School right now, there are two hundred and sixteen students that live within one mile of the school. What I'm not telling you at this juncture is how many of those two hundred and sixteen students actually avail themselves of transportation. Don't have that data yet, we're gonna need to look at that pretty carefully, but two hundred and sixteen students, if for instance, they were utilizing transportation. Might be able to save us a driver or two or three, just based on the designation of a non-transportation zone. Similarly, at Blair, I'll let you ask a question just a second, Ms. Cook, similarly at Blair, sixty six students live within a mile. If there were a non-transportation zone designated for Blair, that may save us a bus or two. And then you can see the numbers at Laurel Lane at a half mile and you can see the number at Lafayette for the mile. I'll pause there and see if I can answer questions.
Uh Ms. Cook and then Doctor Beers.
Thank you, um so the other thing that I think that doesn't tell us is whether or not it's safe to walk.
No question.
Cuz there might be no sidewalks, like so James Blair, I I that's all sidewalks, but Jamestown, other crosswalks, so they're. I mean, I'm all in favor of no transportation zones, uh which I'll talk about a little bit later, but. Yeah, we don't, we don't have a walkable environment here.
So part of the reason that we wanted to share this this evening is is to put the inform, as as we look at all of the various ways. We can continue to improve operationally and organizationally, the utilization of of a non-transportation zone at the secondary level. May afford us the ability of having more drivers to serve a greater number of needs at the. At the elementary level, more work to be done on this for sure.
Doctor Beers.
Like the follow-up on uh Mrs. Cook's. Question and that is, I'm I'm looking at, I'm looking at the schools and realize there's a lot of road construction going on all over the place here. Sorry, especially around Lafayette, um so I would be concerned if kids. Who are a mile away from Lafayette had to walk up Long Hill Road in order to get to uh school. Cuz uh uh there aren't sidewalks and they've got all that stuff, whatever they, whatever. Feedout wants to call it, um so I, yeah, I guess I'd be concerned about that, um and and. I don't even, even in Laurel Lane, there uh I'm not sure all the areas have sidewalks. It's in one of the, the, I think the other thing, part of that is, what I've really noticed in all the schools, especially elementary. Lines of parents in cars.
Sure.
And if you have all of those cars plus other kids that are walking to school, um I I I'm, I don't know, I'm. I I know there's a solution, but that's a challenge.
And and if I can interject really quick, I know you, I know we continue to say walking, but our policy says travel. And so we know students walk, but our policy says it's a travel, so it's parents' responsibility to ensure kids get to and from school. And many times they drive them, um and so, but I just wanna make sure that we we are noticed. That it's a travel policy that we have, not a walk policy.
I also wanna say that the the one of the scenarios, we we would not. We would not create a a system necessarily where we would endanger or ever attempt to endanger students' lives by. Having to transport themselves to school or rely on parents, so a- as we begin this process of really looking at the. Option for a non-transportation zone, it would be based on the ability for a student to get. To school and from school in a safe manner. Additionally, in other divisions that utilize this process, there are exemptions that can be requested. Um so for instance, uh in a in a neighborhood for which I'm familiar, uh there is a family of which I live. That is, you know, half mile from the school. I'm not particularly fond of the idea of my daughter walking up our street and taking a left and getting to school. So it's our responsibility as a family to navigate, how does that happen on a daily basis? Who is responsible for getting there in the morning, who's responsible for picking her up, but I know based on where I live that I live in a non-transportation zone. So so one of the scenarios as we talk about this as a community is. A, mentioning it out loud and talking about this could be discussed, B, determining what those non-transportation zones may be. And then C, communicating that so everybody's aware and has time to appropriately plan for it. And I I think that's the component that that really as we look at our system, based on our current staffing model of drivers. We need to look at every single solution that could potentially help us become more effective and potentially bring contracted services back in-house. Allowing our own drivers to be responsible for that.
So so carpooling could uh come back in vogue as a result of that. Which is what people used to do many, many years ago, instead of just having one student walking. The uh I I think the the other, the other um question, the other question I have related to that. All these cars now that are going to all these schools. Wh- what's um uh what's gonna happen if all those parents decide, okay, it's safe to get on the bus again? Will that make the runs longer or how how will that impact?
If, there is a possibility it could make it longer, but if students are all at the same stop, they'll be getting on that stop. It's when you add stops to those runs and when you're gonna make it longer.
But do we, do we stop at every designated stop now if 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 there's nobody there?
Are you, are you asking if a a stop at this particular corner, there's nobody, we will not stop if there's nobody currently there, that's correct.
Let me clarify though, cuz I don't, I want parents to understand, if the bus arrives before. This they're supposed to be there, they're gonna stop and wait until the time, until they're, cuz we don't wanna get there early and then student comes out and we're not there. So we're gonna stop if the bus gets there early, but if we're on time, the bus is gonna continue to go.
Ms. Origo and then Ms. Hummel.
Yeah, these conversations that we've had with county and city, or is this something that we can? I mean, is that, is that part of this to start thinking on a macro level and how we integrate this? Work with this, the county, I was what I'm picturing, I mean, I live, and it's not up there, but I live. Close enough to Clara Bird and to Berkeley that that I, you know, could, e- even if I rode with my child. Would never do that on John Tyler, I mean, there's that stretch where there's nothing and it's incredibly dangerous, so even if I was with my child, I wouldn't. Ride there, so, but this is something I've thought about for a long time, that we should work with the county in some way. You know, it might take some planning and some time and some, might be some purchase of easements and so and whatnot, but is that something that we're considering?
It's a good topic, I think, for the liaison committee.
So to Ms. Origo's question that has not taken place yet.
We are sharing with the board this evening initial thoughts and planning for twenty two, twenty three and 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 beyond. Um so we we have not broached the idea of easements or installing sidewalks, but but we do want. Our community thinking about all of the different things that we can do to to facilitate daily transportation more effectively.
Sure, and I think the other thing.
I I think, Ms. Or, go ahead and follow on question.
No.
I wanna get to Ms. Hummel first and then we can come to you, Doctor Beers.
Thank you, um the non-riders, how much does that, I I mean. I am totally guilty guilty of being like the person that wanted to hedge my bets when my kids were younger. Cuz I was like, oh yeah, we're gonna sign up for the bus so that in the eventuality, I couldn't take them for some reason. I knew they could get to school, but I would have been absolutely fine with the policy that after ten days, you're gonna have to request it. So I guess my question is, how many non-riders like Julie Hummel's kids are. Out there that that is causing inefficiency in your routes?
Well, I couldn't give you an exact number, I can tell you the process we go by, if you, if our drivers recognize that the student is not on the bus. They will come back to our router and we will start taking kids off of the run. You know, so I couldn't tell you exactly how many that is, how many kids we've taken off this year, I can look and see if we can find out.
Contact the parents and say, hey, your kid hasn't shown up at this bus route, we're not, we're taking you off.
No, it's.
No, I've experienced that, the year my son was in kindergarten, he was sick for a week and I didn't know that after. At that time, they said it was after five days and so the next Monday, he just didn't have a bus and I didn't know that, so that's how you find out.
That's how you find out. Okay, um and then to Ms. Origo's point, I know the city of Williamsburg has like a ten-year plan. Where they're trying to make the city bikeable, right, like, is it?
That's re- that's regional, yeah.
Regional, okay, so I I mean, I do think this is a a conversation that would be great to have with our. With James City County and Williamsburg of just, wouldn't it be a wonderful thing to have safe sidewalks? And so kids could actually ride the bikes to school and walk to school, it would be just really nice. In the meantime, I would hope that when we talk about non-transportation zones, the last. Um the last group of children that we would be talking about would be our elementary school students. Because I just think that to me.
And that's the plan right now, Mrs. Hummel, we're looking at some potential areas just at the secondary level for next year. And then looking at elementary in the year after, that's that's the plan moving, moving into this.
Yep, and I can also interject one other thing, we do have a matrix that we determine stop criteria, what's the safety of the stop, how fast that that road is, is it on? You know, is it near a, uh do they have enough egress and enough space for kids to stand, so there is a stop matrix that we use. To determine safety.
Doctor Beers, back to you and then I think Ms. Young.
Uh the other thing I thought about, and it's sort of a follow-up to Mrs. Orte- uh Ortega, is um. The city and the county um have their own transportation buses, they have routes. Um and I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity of this grant out there, something that if if. Um some kind of agreement or or just working with them, uh there might be grants out there. That would allow them to purchase more buses in order to have a more comprehensive. Transportation system which would include our our school buses.
We just don't want them hiring our drivers.
But if they're driving our kids.
Right, well, I, yeah, so we we have explored.
I've I've explored the conversation with Zach over at WADA and we've looked at their routes of. It's as far as two years ago when we were just trying to figure out how to get kids to school. And if their routes lined up with the times which our schools opened, because if the route gets in front of Lafayette at six forty. But school doesn't start until seven fifteen, what happens to those kids from six forty to seven fifteen? So all of those kinda conversations were occurring, but we will, we will, we will re- we look at those things.
I, yeah, and I I know there there are obviously scheduled challenges, but it would be, it would be interesting if they. You know, began to see how uh this could operate together and it might. And I, and as I said, um um there's, there's no doubt in my mind that there is state or federal money. That the city or county could get in order to bu- get additional buses as, you know, as we. Uh try to get more people to uh, you know, to ride the bus.
The challenge is always drivers.
See another question in the queue, Mr. Dow, I do have some additional uh meaty slides to go through, but I'm I'm happy to.
Can we move on, do you have a question?
I was just going to follow with Doctor Beers, that was exactly what I was going to bring up, because in many countries. I mean, we're one of the few countries, I think, in the world that provides transportation for students, most students either A, walk. Or B, they use public transportation and I can say from personal experience that it alleviates a lot of problems. You don't have the discipline problems on uh city buses because some adult's gonna probably say something too if you're out of line, so. I mean, I think working together with WADA would be an excellent suggestion and. Um and would like that pursued because even in those students that are in those uh non-transportation. Transportation zones could possibly take advantage of using the city bus.
Sounds like the topic for an urban studies dissertation. Get somebody from. Or public policy, get somebody from William and Mary.
I was just gonna comment that we didn't have yellow buses in Ireland and I took public transportation to school.
Yeah, exactly.
Doctor Kever, back to you.
Thank you, uh Mr. Dow, for the the board's recollection, our current. Tier times and in the far right-hand side would be the afternoon afternoon on-time percentage rates. Uh those percentage rates are not where we want them to be, and and genuinely. Our on-time afternoon percentages have increased since the beginning of the school year. When we made some slight shifts to our time schedule. One of the challenges that we have is the amount of time between the dismissals at the four different levels. And and our current dismissal gap time is thirty five minutes. So it's it's thirty five minutes, two fifteen to two fifty, and then two fifty to three twenty five. That puts us in a very, very difficult spot of getting our students home from high school that ride the bus. And getting to the middle school to pick those students up on time, thereby getting to the tier three elementary. Uh we get much better towards the end of the day, so that's our, that's our current reality. Trans Finder made some very specific suggestions for an optimal tier structure for our school division. Related to our current staffing and the Trans Finder suggested that we look at. Starting with elementary school and then moving into secondary school, whether it be high school, middle school, middle school, high school. But the tier structure would be elementary first and then uh and then the secondary. I share that because that's a a planning piece that organizationally we need to consider for twenty three, twenty four. Uh there are a number of different scenarios across the community that would need to sort of be worked through. Uh and and having participated in a similar. Community level dialogue relative to shifting start times and tier times, I would say you want a runway. To be able to engage the community in that, however, if if the board directed. I I would, I would recommend that you really, we look at that in earnest for the twenty three, twenty four school year. And that we start talking about that now into the summer to best prepare ourselves uh for the community to. To feel like they're engaged in that process, because every single facet of the community will be impacted. That notwithstanding, if we lose twenty drivers. And are unable to staff those. Quite frankly, we would need to come back to the board with some some very dynamic shifts in the tiering structure. In order to be able to deliver students to and from school.
Is there more, Mr. Kever?
There's one additional slide. That would.
Before we go, can I, I I could tell you. Before we go, can I, I, I could tell you, there, there are middle school and high school parents and students who would very much appreciate that shift.
Yeah.
Very much.
Elementary school parents.
Yeah.
Mr. Keever.
Yeah, yes, sir. Let me share with you the tier times and placements for twenty-two, twenty-three based on our current FTEs and staffing scenarios. We have, based on this schedule that we're taking forward, slightly shortened the high school and middle school days. We have created additional gaps between dismissal times, which we believe will allow us to increase our on-time afternoon percentages. You'll note that DJ Montague has been shifted from the elementary tier three to elementary tier four. We feel like this particular schedule with this particular placement of schools will give us the best opportunity next year to deliver students to and from school in a timely fashion. But we'll be looking in earnest at the concepts that we just shared with you with elementary starting us off and, and secondary following behind.
All right. Questions for Mr. Keever. Ms. Cook.
Oh, yeah.
Have at it.
Actually, I have more statements, actually, which shouldn't surprise any of you. So I think this is a topic that is, that I feel very strongly about and, and it's frustrating to me that we do have such challenges with our transportation system. And I think Ms. Ortego really hit the nail on the head. And she talked about sort of communication with our local governments. And a lot of what we are challenged with is not within our control of jurisdiction. So the shape of our, you know, county is odd anyway. So that just makes it harder. We're long and skinny. Our school locations are not where people live, so that makes it hard. Our attendant zones are interesting, especially at the elementary school level, which makes it harder. And then our built environment is weird because our neighborhoods are all on these major arteries with the cul-de-sacs as opposed to being on a grid, which is good transportation planning. We are not dense. Everything's kind of spread out. Everybody's got their acre or whatever, half an acre. We don't have any sidewalks. Instead, we have ditches, right? So, and that's V dot. That's not the county. So, so there are consequences to that. And, and so it's just very frustrating. If you look at our budget, we don't spend a whole lot more than our neighboring jurisdictions on transportation as a percentage of the whole. I think Gloucester's more expensive, spends a bigger amount of, the percentage of their budget on transportation. Ms. Ewing, if, if, because you sent us that comparison chart every, so am I, am I tracking correctly? Yeah, well, you can look.
I'll have to look that up.
Yeah. But anyway, we are not the most, but we're, I think, second only to Gloucester in terms of percentage of our budget that we put in transportation. So as a result of that, I am absolutely in support of using WADA for, for our high school. I'm absolutely in favor of non-transportation zones, absolutely in favor of flipping the schedule. And then I, I also am in favor of combining grades. You know, this whole idea of elementary school kids have to ride with elementary school kids and middle school kids have to ride with middle school kids and high school kids. You have lower take-up rates at the high school, which makes the routes potentially longer. So you do have less full buses just because, you know, high school kids tend to have the ability to drive. So I, I think you put more kids, more ages on the bus. I know, Mr. Snipes, you have looked at models around the country where elementary and high go together because you don't, middle school kids, you kind of want to be separate anyway. It's a whole, yeah, a whole different group. But anyway, so I, I'm in favor of any of those things to make this better. Because I'd like to spend less of our budget on transportation and have our kids on the road less and have our tiers compressed. And I think all of those things have the capacity to do that. So I'm in favor of fairly significant disruption to the, from the way we do it now to, to achieve that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
I just have one statement. When I heard bicycle and sidewalks, I got triggered. Parents, be careful from personal experience. Bicycles should not be on sidewalks. They are considered vehicles. So bicycles should never be ridden on sidewalk. So just want to say that.
Bike paths.
Pardon?
Bike paths.
Right, exactly.
Ms. Young.
I was just going to say, I agree completely with what Ms. Cook said because, I mean, I was looking at that flip schedule. We should have done that a long time ago. If you have little kids, they're up a long time.
Ready for the day.
Nine forty-five in the morning. They're probably up at six or five. I remember my kids coming and lifting the covers off of my head and I'm going with one eye saying, why are you up? Oh, I'm awake. And so I think sending them to school early makes sense and would probably provide a lot of angst. They come home a little tireder then instead of going to school tired. So I support that.
Any others? From my part, I, I agree with Ms. Hummel entirely. I really vibrate when I think about elementary school students. And I appreciate that it's transportation and not necessarily walking, but putting families in a position where, you know, mom and dad are already gone. They got that kid, that fifth grader or fourth grader's got to get to school. And they just start hoofing it. That, that really makes me uncomfortable as we continue these conversations and think about the best paths forward. I was curious, looking at the numbers that you provided, sixty regular ed drivers. What does that actually look like though? Are those, are any percentage or numbers of those on-call or substitute?
Yes, sir.
Those are active drivers every single day?
Yes, sir. We, and, and right now, we have members of our transportation team that are, that are driving routes and filling in. We have what we call double backs where they will load up, unload the students, come back and pick up another load. We, we probably need to be, that number sixty for us really needs to be about seventy-five generally, genuinely for us to be more efficient and operationally able to deliver folks on time. The shifting of the tiers to where elementary would lead the day and secondary would come second. The, the estimated number of regular education drivers that would be needed for that is about sixty-four. Whereas right now, the number of drivers that we should have for the delivery system that we're using is close to about eighty-five. So we're making it work with sixty. But part of the reason that Transfinder brought forward the idea of shifting the tiers is that we would be much better with our, our current staffing scenarios and probably have a far easier time of getting close to ninety percent delivery rate across all of the tiers if we change the order.
Ms. Ordego.
Two quick questions. What differentiates a regular education driver from special ed versus pre-K? Is it the size of the vehicle being driven or is it additional training?
It, it could be based on the vehicle itself. It could be based on the, the specific needs that the student has in terms of a wheelchair lift or particular aid scenario.
Okay.
The, the type of bus as well.
And pre-K, with the pre, is this a smaller vehicle, pre-K driver? What is that?
A pre-K veh, a pre-K vehicle is a smaller vehicle and, and you have, of course, your car seats on them, so.
Okay. And so does that mean that we have empty buses that sit empty? Because if we had fifty, say fifteen more drivers, they would be driving something, right? So do we have empty buses sitting?
We believe we have the, the, the resources to accommodate additional FTEs. We, we, we have the buses. We need the people.
So, yes.
Yes, we, we have the buses. I think in some ways, I don't want to give the impression that, that buses simply always sit empty. We'll rotate buses. There'll be buses being serviced. There're buses that need, you know, those kinds of scenarios. But we have the capacity, if we had the additional personnel, to be able to utilize them daily on routes.
Which we did in previous years, but we just can't get them, which is why we have the contract as well.
So last kind of statement leads into a question for me. First time I saw this, I was really excited, interested, and it just made sense that we would flip and that elementary school would start early. Thinking about my own family and my own children. As they've grown older, it's really tough getting, getting themselves get out of bed and off to high school. My middle schooler, he's starting to get there. We'll see what happens in two years. But that was not the case when they were at elementary school and they were just ready for the day like Ms. Young talked about. So I'm, I'm interested to see that and I, I'm really more interested. This is my question, what, you mentioned community conversation. What does the feedback, community feedback part of this look like? Are we still kind of developing how to communicate this and receive feedback?
I think we would want to talk about that and, and bring forward some recommendations on the best manner to, to move forward. When I said a little bit earlier that the entire community is impacted, it, it is every single member of the, the staff that is impacted. It is all of our families and, and students. So it, it needs to be well-explained and, and an opportunity for dialogue around the why and, and really put into place some parameters around the times and how that'll work for everybody. Because for, for every positive feature that we can bring forward, there'll be some, some of our community members that may bring forward a different response or a different reaction. And I think we would want to go into it with a, a really well-crafted plan as to the why and the how.
Thank you. Great. Last comments on that, Dr. Heron?
No, I were looking forward and we'll come back with a plan of where to go next and to start those community conversations.
Move on to item seven point zero two. Thank you, Mr. Snipes and Mr. Keever. Strategic plan update, year four progress for goals two and five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're going to start with goal five, Department of Human Resources. And Mr. Baker's going to lead us off and then Mr. Keever's going to take over with goal two.
Hello again, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. And Dr. Heron, on behalf of Department of Human Resources, we're goal five team. I'm pleased to be here to share the progress made this year under goal five. The goal centers on human capital and positive culture. Throughout the year, we received updates from the human resources and specifically my presentation with the board on November sixteen. We covered our recruitment efforts and employee compensation and benefits. Tonight, I want to focus on collective work of strengthened recruitment to attract highly qualified and diverse applicants and to foster a workplace culture where employees feel valued, well-respected, and supported. This year's been different than any other.
Thank you. This year has been different than any other year. Constant need to staff schools during the current year anticipated the challenge to be operationally ready for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Anticipating the challenge for the upcoming school year, we developed a staffing plan with our focus on remaining a hundred percent staffed on the first day of school. The staffing plan included analyzing teacher hiring trends by content area and level over a five-year period and reviewing the upcoming retirement eligibility, retirement eligibilities. We also evaluated teacher turnover trends and we also engaged our student teachers directly. As a result of our analysis, through an improved intent survey process, we identified a hundred and ten teachers that were uncertain about their plans for next year and we engaged with them on what it would take for them to remain. Principals also engaged in stay interviews with instructional staff to help understand the uncertainty around their employment status for next year. We made thirty-seven early offers to teachers and twenty-seven, I'm sorry, twenty-six accepted. And traditionally, that number has been around five. And an added challenge this year has been maintaining staffing. Since the first day of school, we've hired another sixteen teachers and a hundred and twenty support staff and ninety-eight new substitute teachers have been added. Each of these numbers represents an ongoing effort by the human resources staff. HR has been able to meet this increased challenge while also preparing for the year ahead. Some of the efforts to help us be fully staffed include hosting a support job fair on January twenty-eighth with a focus primarily on bus drivers, custodians and cafeteria workers. And we had twenty-two attendees at this fair and it's important to note that we hired ten. We had a job fair on March the fourth that focused primarily on teachers. We had a hundred and thirty-eight attendees and that was up from fifty-six attendees last year. We offered teachers early hiring contracts on our job fair on March the fourth where we offered eleven teachers on site that day. We've also been up and down the East Coast attending fifteen universities' job fairs, including six historically black colleges and universities. Facebook ad campaign, which reached over twenty-five thousand people. And finally, this year, we, with feedback from our principals and our hiring managers, we switched application systems to a more customer-friendly system. Our employees are our most valuable resource. We express this in many ways. In the past year, based on an emerging need, we have revamped our new teacher orientation sessions. We oriented all new instructional staff through many onboarding sessions held in July and August. We had eight sessions over two months to provide flexibility in scheduling and all staff received human resource information as well as sessions with instructional technology to receive their laptops and get connected with their schools earlier than ever. We believe this shift to the new onboarding put us in a better position when teachers arrive at new teacher orientation and the groundwork was set for a strong start of the school year. New teacher orientation was reimagined to provide a full day and a half of dedicated curriculum and instruction resources, instructional technology, public relations and wellness. We received over a hundred and fifty new teachers to these sessions, our largest event ever. An additional half-day was added to the building level to introduce mentors and other building-based activities. Seventy-four percent of the teachers evaluating the sessions rated them between a four and a five. Also, competitive compensation and benefits are another example of value on our employees. And thanks to you, we plan to provide staff with a seven percent pay raise going into next year. One of our most high-profile recognition events is the Teacher of the Year Ceremony and the overall Teacher of the Year announcements, which will happen this Thursday during our Teacher of the Year celebration. We'll be celebrating with all of our Teachers of the Year and our Rookie Teachers of the Year. We truly have some extraordinary teachers and this year, we are pleased to return to recognizing and honoring them in person. Finally, in this evening, I want to acknowledge the superintendent's two employee forums, the Teacher Forum and the Support Employee Forum. These school and department representatives actively engage with Dr. Heron in shaping the ways we support our employees and continually improve WJCC schools. The Teacher Forum has regular meetings with our teacher leaders, including Past Teachers of the Year. The Teacher Forum for twenty-one, twenty-two has a goal to improve overall staff morale by one, retaining our effective teachers and two, attracting qualified new teachers. The Teacher Forum reached their goal by communicate, by working with communications and HR and by telling their story of highlighting their, their, their success through their growth of who we are and our why. The Teacher Forum also gave feedback to the superintendent, HR and communications. They detailed the most important factors retaining and recruiting teachers, and that was salary. The Support Employee Forum provided many insights on the areas of opportunities for school divisions and the outcomes for the school year. They developed a how-to library for common tasks, clocking in, clocking out, how to review your paycheck. They developed employee guidelines to comment questions. And they had a launched a recruiting effort featuring support employees voice, voices. And we look forward to continued partnerships between Dr. Heron and these two important groups. That completes this evening's strategic plan progress related to goal five. I'm happy to answer any questions before we move on to goal two.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any questions on goal five? I'm just, I'm really looking forward to celebrating our Teachers Thursday and in particular, our Teacher of the Year, who I still am kind of left in the dark about. But that'll be a fun announcement. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. As, as we transition into talking about goal two, wanted to remind the board that our goal two is related to educational equity, fostering a learning environment that respects the diversity of students and provides targeted equitable opportunities for success. This evening, our focus on goal two will be specifically related to strategy two, relative to promoting equitable access for underrepresented student populations to rigorous academic courses and programming, as well as some brief updates on strategy one around the MTSS scenario, strategy three, related to high-quality preschool education, and strategy six, effective transition programs and activities. Joining us this evening to detail the successes of, of strategy two, access to rigorous academic programs, is Ms. Colorado. Ann?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, esteemed school board members and Dr. Heron. I'm Ann Colorado, coordinator for Gifted Education and Talent Development. I'm happy to be here tonight to share our gifted program updates under the umbrella of goal two, strategy two. The Gifted Education and Talent Development Program strives to support students' academic strengths and prepare all students, including those from underrepresented populations, for rigorous academic courses and programming. The new local plan for the education of the gifted was approved last June. Since then, we were able to work on several areas of the plan that will impact the academic support of diverse populations. Since then, we were able to work on several areas of the plan that will impact the academic support of diverse populations. First, toward our effort to create a comprehensive equitable gifted identification system, we audited our identification tools, updated our student profile sheet to align with identification in general intellectual aptitude for K through twelve, and expanded our identification process to consider extenuating circumstances and alternative data for referred students during eligibility meetings. By using these enhanced practices, we hope to capture more gifted students from underrepresented populations. Next, this year, we were able to provide comprehensive annual training for all instructional staff on gifted education, underrepresented populations of gifted, talent development resources, differentiation strategies, and programmatic information. We also created two gifted courses and ten differentiation micro-courses for our professional learning management system to help teachers meet licensure hours and support their knowledge in implementing appropriate differentiation in their classrooms. Lastly, we purchased and created many challenging materials that teachers can use in their classrooms for any student whose data shows that they need more challenge. By improving teacher knowledge of gifted and potentially gifted characteristics in all students, teachers will be better able to recognize talent and help develop it through improved access to challenging curriculum materials. Finally, our department began implementing our new talent development push-in program in kindergarten. Within the next few years, all students in grades K through two will receive quarterly instruction in higher-level thinking skills from our primary gifted and talent development resource teachers. Pardon me. The lessons focus on teaching selected thinking routines from Project Zero, developed by the Harvard Graduate School of Education. They extend the core curriculum in each grade level and they support the gifted program goal areas of critical and creative thinking. The idea is that by teaching these thinking routines to all students, then all students' critical and creative thinking ability will be elevated. Elevated thinking is a prime way to help students' academic talent areas to emerge. At James River Elementary School, we are piloting this program with a full-time primary gifted and talent development resource teacher who has been able to accomplish many things this year. She attends weekly team planning for grades K one and two in all subject areas, which will amount to approximately thirty-three weeks of collaborative planning sessions by the end of the year. She has created multiple tier-two instructional extension resources and independent activities for K through two classrooms based on collaborative team planning. She pushes into all K through two classrooms once a week during reading and once a week during math to support teachers based on grade level plans and student extension needs, thus creating relationships with all K through two students. She has taught four kindergarten talent development lessons to each kindergarten classroom, four first-grade talent development lessons to each first-grade classroom, and two second-grade talent development lessons to each second-grade classroom, using the thinking routines tied to grade level content. And she has collected work products and anecdotal data that showed unique student thinking so she could support the academic needs of those students. Ultimately, this model of talent development helps all teachers better meet the academic needs of all their students and it helps prepare all students for advanced coursework as they get older. By having a primary gifted and talent development teacher spend an hour or more in each K through two classroom each week, she's able to know all of the students, know their strength areas, and how to nurture their talents with their teacher. This weekly contact has also helped her notice and nurture students from diverse backgrounds whose data sometimes might not be where we hope it would be, but whose thinking ability is very strong. By attending math and reading team planning times for K through two each week, she has become a valuable member of the instructional specialist team to help teachers with differentiating instruction and creating resources for teams to use to challenge their students. By being such an active member of the James River K through two teams, all students have benefited from her work during this pilot. This completes the gifted program updates related to goal two, strategy two. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Colorado? Any at all from our board? Sordigo's leaning in? No? Okay.
I just want to say thank you for your work and for your presentation and really in particular, um, I previous boards that I've had the benefit of serving with have often remarked that it's important that our division not um that we have a balance between the um support that we provide students that need additional support in learning and that we not leave our gifted population or even those that could be identified within the gifted population. And so I appreciate this report and it shows that uh we we're uh we're well-balanced in that way.
Thank you.
So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Continuing on with the update, Mr. Dow, yes, sir, wanted to give a some brief information relative to strategy one of goal two, multi-tier systems of support. And I know in April, you heard from Ms. Boujwa around the MTSS piece, but wanted the board to be aware that this spring, all of the schools are have participated in a self-assessment process. Where at a minimum, the administrator overseeing MTSS and the teacher lead met with members of central office staff who facilitated questions where schools rated their implementation based on criteria for core features of MTSS. That data will be part of action planning for school year twenty-two, twenty-three to also include discipline data and those planning sessions will occur this summer in anticipation of next school year. We look forward to continued growth in the interventions uh through the MTSS framework to support improved outcomes for all students. Relative to strategy three, access to high-quality preschool, this board is reminded that the preschool needs assessment was completed in the fall of the particular school year. We received CIP funding commitment from our funding partners. We are in the final stages of a feasibility study to determine some specific locations where those preschool spaces could be built and we hope to have an RFP for design out later in the summer as that process to increase our access to high-quality preschool continues moving forward. And finally, wanted to briefly mention some specific information around effective transition activities. We are excited about a Berkeley to Lafayette ninth-grade transition pilot whereby identified students are participating this summer in an opportunity to get a jumpstart on the high school experience by earning a high school CTE credit through career exploration. This is for targeted groups of students moving from Berkeley to Lafayette and gives these students a great opportunity to develop relationships with key staff as they make that transition to high school. That concludes our presentation on goal two. Be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Ms. Young?
Right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Keever, you you said, I'm, if you could go back one slide, where about the transition program for um from Berkeley to Lafayette, is that is that considered a pilot for this year? And then would that be eventually be extended to uh other middle schools and and high schools?
We we sure hope so, Ms. Young. We we do believe that there are some very intentional, specific steps that we need to take as we work with students moving from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school and high and and so this is a particular group of students we're attempting to identify from Berkeley moving to Lafayette to give them that experience of earning that first high school credit. If it goes well, we absolutely would want to be able to expand that to our other middle to high school transitions.
Okay, I guess then it brings up my next question. So what is the criteria for selection for these students?
The identification is based on uh some scenarios that the Berkeley administrative and teacher teams have put together for those students who may need that additional push as they're making their way from eighth grade to ninth grade. This is a particular program where um teams from both Berkeley and Lafayette are working together to develop a program, identify students, and then create support mechanisms for those students as they make the transition.
Are these students that need more support and?
These are student, we want all of our students to have a certain level of support in making transitions. This would be a group that as they enter ninth grade for the first time, we want to be sure they're on track to earn those high school credits and be on track for on-time graduation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Sordigo?
Ms. Young covered a number of my questions, but then just following up, is the, what is, why is it only a CTE credit and not any credit?
I would contend that it's not just only a CTE credit, but it's an initial credit towards high school graduation. There are specific career exploration components that are required in order to earn earn credit through CTE. And and we believe that in the the idea of rising ninth graders really having opportunities for career expli- exploration is a key facet in helping them be best prepared to utilize that time in high school for is it career exploration, is it college, what is it that I want to do and how can I get there in terms of my coursework?
So it's it's nudging them to explore specifically, think about what they want to do.
Purposeful nudging.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Keever.
Thank you.
And uh we will move on to item seven point zero three, which is a discussion about history textbook adoption and IIIAA. Ms. Cook, would you like to lead us off?
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Dow. I I would just like to um kind of provide some context about why I asked for this discussion item tonight. Um, because our our rules and procedures can sometimes be arcane and um, you know, generally, people get used to the flow of how we do business, but every now and then, there's a, you know, a kind of bump in the road and so just, um, and this is one of those cases. So I just wanted to, in the interest of transparency, uh, to kind of explain. Um, and and I agree with some of the comments that um people were surprised that this wasn't on the agenda. I I share that. Um, you know, I I am sympathetic to that uh perspective and I think generally speaking, it's not a good practice to change the agenda, particularly if something of substance on the day of the meeting. Um, but you know, I think four of us thought it should have been on the agenda, so um, which is why um they they are here now and and I wish it had been on the published agenda. Um, I also want to make it clear to the um public that once a board makes a decision, it's uh regardless of what your vote was as an individual board member, it is your job to uh support the uh the will of the board. And so I think those of us who who voted in the minority with regard to this particular issue have been out in the community and talking and supporting the decision of the board. And so I just want to be clear that that's just how how this works. And um, and so um, and and with that in mind, I I think it's also important for the public to understand that uh it is not typical to revisit um a vote. In fact, sort of protocol suggests that only um board members who participated in the prevailing uh 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 position are able to uh make a motion to revisit a topic. So in that case, the only people at this table who can make a motion uh to adopt the textbooks that are on the um agenda later on are are Mrs. Young, Ms. Hummel, and Mrs. Sordigo and and Mr. Dow. So um, Dr. Beers, uh, Ms. Hunley and I are not uh in a position to make that motion. So I just want to be clear about that. Um, I also want to explain why I suggested that we have a motion today or consider an action item to suspend the application of policy IIIAA today. Uh, and that's the textbook adoption policy. And that is after I I talked uh recently with the Virginia School Board Association attorney as well as our um our attorney. And um, it is um, you know, school boards have hundreds of policies. Uh, we have between two-hundred-and-fifty and three-hundred policies. I don't know how many, Ms., or I don't know if you you know off the top of your head, but it's a lot of policies. And so um, although we try mightily to follow every single solitary policy by the letter of the law, uh, if you will, um, sometimes we don't. Um, particularly those policies that are twenty-plus years old, uh, we may develop a practice that everybody's comfortable with and uh doesn't necessarily uh uh align. So um, with that in mind, the school board attorney suggested that a way to remedy any inconsistency with the policy, which I'm sure some of you will discuss uh tonight, and so I um, you know, won't won't belabor that point, but any consistence inconsistency with the policy and our, as it currently is stated in our action tonight, can be remedied by uh suspending the application of that policy for this evening. And that is a um, a a credible way to move forward and um protect the board from uh any potential issues. Uh, there's really no um great way to move forward today. Um, there are uh, there are problems with not adopting uh textbooks. There's problems with adopting the textbooks. Uh, and so I think we have to just balance what our values are. Um, on one hand, if uh if we take action tonight to adopt the textbooks, uh, any or all of them, um, we get to use money that has been budgeted to our division for our children rather than returning it to the county. Um, and we get to have books that get into our teachers' and students' hands by uh the start of the school year because you remember, we're starting a little earlier uh this year, next year rather. Um, and so it allows us to use that money uh at the end of the year by having, instead of having it kind of go out into the ether. Um, but um, but on the other hand, uh, we would not be following our policy to the letter of the law. I think um, I read that policy and and feel like we have been consistent with it um because we have a committee and and we're always informed when those committees are are um created and our school board, a school board member serves on them. Um, but I understand reasonable people can pre- um, can um, can disagree. And also in in so, in not following our policy, policy, um, which, you know, we, if you interpret it that way, we've been doing that for ten years. But our attorney does advise us that uh parents could, uh, if they feel that their child has been harmed, uh, could petition the court uh with regard to our not uh our behaving in a arbitrary and capricious way. Those, that typically happens according to our attorney around issues of of discipline and redistricting. Um, but that is um, but that is why um, why it it makes sense to consider uh suspending the application of that policy today um and because we have, because it's time-sensitive. Um, I do think uh the policy committee should, um, having served on this policy committee for a few years and I know it's rigorous work and I know staff tries hard to get kind of ten policies to us a month, which is what would get us through like five uh a a policy every five years. I do think we need to be intentional about going to the oldest policies. I think it's really not a great idea when our policies are twenty years old. Um, because it it, you're almost guaranteed that your practice isn't aligned with the policy when something is over two decades old. So I think this one, um, it was, highlights that and I think we need to um revisit that. But I'd also like to say that uh whenever we take action on something, the policy is listed. And at the last meeting, that that policy was linked to, the regulation was linked to, if you link, if you clicked on it, you could see the policy, it was right there. So it wasn't, and 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 so that's kind of part of what I do every time I prepare for a meeting. So um, I don't know. So uh uh, so I think that, in my opinion, I I won't say anything about adopting the textbooks. I will leave that to um a school board member who uh who may cast a vote in a prevailing way last time. But with regard to eight-point-zero-three suspending application of the policy IIIAA for two days meeting, I would support that to protect the school division uh and allow us the opportunity to reconsider those um, those textbook adoptions. And and also, one more thing, I think staff came to us, they were really honest about the need to update the policy. They were really honest about the need to update the process. And I think um, it's really important to incent honesty coming, even when it's not in the best of light for staff to be able to come to a board in a transparent way and say, you know, what we've identified a better way. And I think the um answer to that should be, thank you, we agree with you, let's do it better in the future. But for now, um, you know, let's uh, let's get those books in the hands of the kids and the teachers. So um, I just wanted to provide those comments in that background and I hope that makes at least the kind of um, the uh odd parliamentary procedure that went on today at least makes sense to some people out there. So anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Any other comments, Ms. Hummel?
Hi, um, I would also like to comment on the parliamentary procedure situation today. Um, and I'll just read my my statement because a lot of times I end up just speaking extemporaneously, but this time I actually wrote it down. So, "I want to clear up any confusion about the decision that I made during our last school board meeting. I don't like surprises and during the last school board meeting, I was surprised by comments that were made during public comments and this in turn led me to surprise my board colleagues and my superintendent with my desire to seek additional time to review the textbook in question. At no time was my decision a final one about not ordering the textbook. I simply wanted more time to understand the criticism and seek clarity. Now, the ideal time for this decision would have occurred during our work session the week before and not during a regular meeting when the textbooks were on our agenda for approval. However, the week before, our work session had been moved up to" However, the week before, our work session had been moved up two hours earlier than in the past. And we received no public comments during that work session, which was unusual compared to our previous two years' experience. After the original motion was defeated, I immediately tried to offer an amended motion to include all the social study. Textbooks with the exception of the AP Government Textbook. But I did not receive a second on my motion, so this resulted in none of the social study textbooks being adopted. This was not my intention or my preference. After the school board meeting, um I wrote to the chair. And I sent an email recommending that we add this motion back onto the agenda. As I was certain that we had a majority of the board who would support that motion being included. In tonight's agenda, um, that. Feeling that the majority of the board would have supported having the motion. In this agenda tonight was um, was. They did, the chair at at the, because what we do for, for. Transparency is the chair and the vice chair meet for agenda preparation. And it's the chair and the vice chair and the superintendents where they discuss what actually gets on the agenda. And so although there was board um, majority. That would want uh for this motion or these motions to go back on the agenda. It was decided not to do so, so uh I think that led. To the action of uh that is happening tonight, which makes it a very confusing situation. However, um, I also had the time to go in and review the textbook in question. And I I looked at all three of the textbooks, because we are under an obligation. Uh, to select textbooks from the textbook committee, we're, we're under an obligation to. Choose one of the three textbooks that are recommended to us by the Virginia Department of Education. That's kind of the, it's always been the case that you start with the Virginia Department of Education's textbooks and then the. Committee then evaluates those textbooks and comes up with a decision. Um, although I don't, I'm not, I don't like the cover of the the textbook. I looked at the other textbooks and although I would have preferred for the textbook cover to have. Uh, not to have been, uh I guess concentrating or highlighting a particular moment in our US government. I would have preferred that it have like an eagle on it or a Capitol building on it or something that's just totally. Uh innocuous, but when you look at the contents of the other three books. Actually, the one, the one that was selected by the textbook committee. Um, was the most balanced in the opinion of the textbook committee. And so I'm comfortable with moving forward with a decision to order textbooks so that our students and teachers will have updated materials. In the classrooms before the start of the new year. I am confident that we will be updating our school board policies regarding textbook adoption and review. With an aim to prevent this situation from happening again. In the meantime, I continue to have confidence that the textbooks, textbooks that were chosen by our committees. Are the most appropriate ones for our students, given our options from the Virginia Department of Education. There will always be criticism of different aspects of textbooks that we choose, we want to hear that criticism, we want to take that. Uh, criticism into consideration, along with all the other pros and cons involved with textbook adoption. So I would like to move forward and I plan on taking positive action tonight on all four textbooks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Uh, Ms. Ortega?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I would like to also mention, uh, talk about the vote um at the last meeting. Um, we've heard from a number of um citizens, mostly via email, we heard from some tonight. I want to say that I am always grateful to hear from citizens, whether they are in support of the way I voted or against it, I. Appreciate um everyone taking time to express their opinion and I read every email and I, I hear you. I understand, given the context in which it was framed for the public. Why it appears that um, it was unnecessary or an emotional reaction. Um, so I get it, I get it. However, I would like to say, speaking on behalf of myself, that my vote was not an emotional reaction. Um, and it was not even a reaction to the public speakers at the last meeting. Um, it wasn't a reaction to a picture on a book cover, uh my remarks were about the process. Um, and were prepared ahead of time after a great deal of work that I had spent preparing and investigating the process, participating in the process. Doing my best to participate in the review process as it was conducted. Um, and so there have been a lot of suggestions otherwise and for myself, that was not true. I had prepared before that meeting. Um, and I know all of my board colleagues prepare ahead of time, so it's, it is not fair to say that. It was simply an emotional reaction to a handful of speakers. Um, since that last meeting, it came to my attention, it became clear to me, I was asked to. Fill in on a policy committee meeting for someone who couldn't attend and it became clear to me that not only were there gaps in the process. Um, that had been identified by division staff. But that the entire review process did not in fact comply with our own policy, IIAA, which reads. The State Board is empowered to adopt textbooks for use in the schools in Virginia. The State Board of Education adopts a multiple list of textbooks for each grade level and subject. From which local boards adopt tech- textbooks in use, uh for use in local school divisions. Local boards may adopt books which are not on the state adopted list, provided the selection is in accordance with specific guidelines. The Williamsburg James City County School Board will adopt textbooks. For use in the local school division based upon recommendations presented by the superintendent. The evaluation of textbooks will be conducted by committees appointed by the board. Our committees were not appointed by our board. That should be a concern for all of my fellow board members. That the language of a policy with, that lies well within the purview of the school board responsibility can be disregarded. And that the result of a noncompliant process can still receive board approval. Why do we have policies if that's the case? Um, maybe the textbook review policy isn't the one you care most about. But what happens when it is, when it, when it is the policy you care most about? I'd also like to address the sense of urgency. And I understand that many in the public feel the sense of urgency for ordering the books. And I get that, I get, I get the impression that has been made. Um, the reason for this sense of urgency to approve right now is not driven by. The teachers or the students' dire need for resources, it's driven by the fact that we are using end of year funds to purchase. Uh, these books, end of year funds were never guaranteed this year. So if we had not gotten to the end of this year, or if we had gotten to the end of this year without sufficient money left over. The teachers and students would not be getting new history books or science books. And I don't think anyone would be discussing it, I could be wrong. Um, I don't know why the, some of the resources are twelve years old. As you know, I've been on the board for four months, so I can't speak to that. Um, but I can speak to the fact that these resources were not in last year's budget. And they are not in the coming year, year's budget. Um, so last year, they were eleven years old, they were not budgeted. And this year, they are twelve years old and they were not budgeted. Um, even though there is, as we discussed earlier, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars earmarked for textbooks, which I understand. Is earmarked for something specific, I don't think we've heard yet what it is, but I think it could be earma- marked for. Um, and so for all of those reasons and because of the importance of. Of the climate we're in, because I think it is in the division's best interest to have a robust, compliant, transparent. Review process in order to withstand. Exactly the kind of criticism we're getting from either side and in the middle. I think it is in division's best interest, in the teacher's best interest and in the student's best interest. To comply with our policy and do this the right way.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega, Ms. Young?
Right, yes, thank you, um. I just want to uh follow up with some of the things that have come to to my attention. First, first of all, I I want to support the current policy, the, and the one that uh we're, we're talking about suspending. Where the school board is opposed to appoint these textbook adoption committees. Which has not been done, as Ms. um, Cook pointed out for over ten years. And maybe we should have been paying a little bit more attention to that. Um, we haven't, uh, the, the one reason that I um. I am for the process being improved and I do appreciate very much. The division coming forward with suggestions and I think uh Mrs. Hummel and I will. As we're working on policy, we will take a look at that and we will certainly. I've, I've written them down, those, the suggestions that they made and they were certainly ones that I totally agreed with. And um, and I want the policy to work. I want it to be functional, I want it to be in the best interest of our students and our teachers and our community. Which brings me to the next part, uh, as I know that many of the teachers are very upset. That they felt they were being undervalued, for me, this has nothing to do with our teachers. Other than the use of their time and I appreciate the use of their time and I see no reason why that. Once the the tech, the policy committee reviews the policy. That that, that that their, their work couldn't stand. I don't see any reason to to uh bring that community, that group together again. Unless there is some reason that comes out of the policy committee. One of the major things that uh I'm being told over and over by Ms. Cook that uh, and I have to point her out. Is that the major reason we exist is for policy. And I remember the very first year I was on the school board, I was on the policy committee. And I was stunned to learn that there had not been a thorough review of our policies for centuries. I won't, may, maybe not centuries, but for many years and, and looking at this one. Two thousand and one, that is a very long time for a policy not to be reviewed and even. Um, complimenting Ms. Cook, she had over, uh, had made a timeline over a period of time, we would get through every. Policy and have them updated and I have totally supported that. Even when I look at the agenda and I see seven, eight policies that come before the board. Because I think it's important that we're current, but one of the things that I do want to let the teachers know. That while I am in complete support and have complete. Um. Confidence in, in their ability and they're a lot smarter than I am, I've, I know. But one of the things that I want them to understand that as a community member. That, yeah, our regulation policy, which is why I brought it up earlier. It says that the evaluation of textbooks is a challenging and demanding task. And I do believe that. Each member of the committee has a direct responsibility to the total community. Total, that includes tax taxpayers, parents, and the other community members. And students, teachers, superintendent, superintendent's cabinet, all of those people. And I do not believe that they, our community is a bunch of hicks. Who can't make good decisions, we have a very intelligent community here, we have a university. Community, we have people that are highly educated and you look at the retired people in our community. Who come from all different walks of life, that certainly should have the opportunity. To weigh in, because it's the use of their taxpayer funds and how this money is used. And I do not believe that that was done and has probably has not been done for several years, even when I was on. The science community, committee a few years ago, I don't believe there are any parents. And at that time, I, I can, was confused and wondered about that. But if we are really trying to reach decisions based on the school system's goals, instructional objectives, students' needs and interest. And community diversity, we have to involve the community in this process and because of that. I am not in favor of going back on our vote. Uh, I am not in favor of supporting um, any of the textbooks, I do not think that the time crunch. For a hundred and thirty thousand dollars compared to the millions that we spent earlier tonight. Um, is a, is a reason to be upset or worried, I think it could be moved to next year. After we've had a thorough review of the policies and have made an attempt to have maybe more time for communities to weigh in. I think that's a legitimate and reasonable thing and if we are truly. Staying that we are in the interest of community, of transparency. I don't see how we cannot do that by allowing more time for parents, students. Uh, teachers that were not on that community, that committee. And committee, community members to participate in that process. And for that reason, I am not for revisiting this, although we are. Um, and I will, will not be voting in favor of any of those textbooks, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any other, what, I'm sorry, Ms. Hummel, go ahead.
Um, I just want to go back to our original meeting when we had the textbooks presented to us and. Um, then we fast forwarded to the next week and I totally agree with. The committee's recommendations about improving the process, I was total in agreement with that. For me, um, again, it was um, I didn't see the cover coming, I knew um what. The staff had said about the books and so that night when the sheet was put between Ms. Ortega and I to share. I'm the board member, I want to be focused on the speaker, I want to be. You know, engaged and attentive and um, I couldn't really see very well. I could see people, I could see signs and I saw uh, Amer- America, something like that and, and I tried to look. And that's why I came with my statement, oh, we're judging a book by its cover, because in my ear, my big mama always said, don't judge a book by its cover. And me, as a sixty year old woman, I went back to school and I was thinking. Um, you know, when I was in school, we couldn't wait to get home, take our eight books, put a paper bag on it, color it. Kids that weren't as creative, their parents had to go to Kmart and buy the pre-done um, book covers. And so that's where my mind was going and then, as you know, we got um, it. The vote and then there was, in my opinion, some confusion in the camp, because we didn't have figures if we were going to just do certain books and not all books and. So I hadn't put my eyes and then I heard the speakers who have every right to bring things to our attention. That is, that was great, talk about the foreword that was in the book. And for me, I'm a person, I want to see it and I wasn't on the committee, I purposely didn't get on the textbook committee, because I have seen enough textbook. Books in my career, so the next day, you know, I was thinking about, you know, I want to see the book, I want to see it for myself. I actually Googled book covers. And as far back as I could go, there was always either an eagle or a flag, except in two thousand and six, there was a collage, it was. Bush, President Bush with his hand up, there were some people with signs, I don't know what the sign said. Um, they were just red signs and then there was the preamble of part of We the People and then there was an empty. Um, some empty seats, I think, in the senate and that's the only time that there was a collage on the cover. And so I took for myself to go to central office and put my hands on the book and look at, look at it and um. I found it to be very neutral, um. I took screenshots of different things that I thought was interested, interesting. And because my commitment is to children, then I tried to, in the short amount of time I had, just talk to high schoolers about the book. In my community, at a basketball court, um, my own kids, my neighborhood. And it was interesting to me, talking to children that maybe they're, this generation is desensitized, I don't, they. Majority didn't see any issues with the cover, they were like, oh, that, that happened. Um, I tried to switch the cover on them, I said, what if there were, you know, Ku Klux Klan, I mean, the kids were always like, well. That's history, that's history, but what they were concerned was, with was the meat of the book, what's in, what does it say on the inside? And is that relevant, is that true history, are they teaching us the right things and I told them I had seen it and, and um, I found it to be. Right in the middle, then also, um, some of them, I asked them about the foreword, like, did you read, do you? They were like, what's a, some of them didn't know what a foreword was, said they never looked at a foreword, they barely even look at a cover. And I talked about the foreword and one young lady did say, you know, I understand when a foreword is written. It is the author's opinion on why they wrote the book and. She says, I, I listen to that, they have the right to do that, but I want to know what's in the book and judge for myself. And so that was what one of the students said and so I did um. Look at the foreword and I do agree in the beginning, the, the author took liberties to say things, but. This was the part that was interesting to me, the last paragraph said that students often ask us whether we are trying to convey a liberal or conservative message in this book. The answer is that our goal is to explain the major viewpoints, how they differ and how such differences matter. We wish to give you the tools to understand American politics and government. Once you have these tools, you may make your own judgment about policy choices and become well-informed participant in our democratic, democratic process. In the 21st century, it is often said that knowledge is power. We sincerely hope that the knowledge conveyed in this book will help you exercise your fair share of political power in the years to come. And so, the children were like, we want the books, you know. My thing, yes, when I see the cover, I mean, I get triggered, I get triggered when I see an auction block, back in the slavery time, I get triggered when I see the Holocaust pictures in books. I get triggered when I see, you know, wars. So, yeah, I understand, but I also understand as part of history. Now, would I have put that cover on the book? No, I don't know why. There were, the kids were like, couldn't they put a collage, like, all the different rallies? Really, these, these are the things the children were saying to me. Or, they were like, just keep the cover plain. So, that was my thing, like, can we contact the distributors and say, just give us a generic cover? The book, everything in the book is fine, it's just the cover. So, that was the way I looked at it. No, I don't think it's, you know, I, we covered up things. I don't want anything to be covered up. I want it to be transparent, and that's why I wanted to say what I said. But for me, the children I talked to, twenty-two, boys, girls, different races, the cover was not a deal breaker. But if that was the case, they were like, can we just get another cover? Would every, would, would that be okay? I don't have the answer to that, and that's something I would like to see if that would be a possibility.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Dr. Beers?
I'm just going to say a few things. First of all, you read the paragraph that I was going to read.
Oh, sorry.
Anyway, I received a number of emails and communications from citizens in, in, in our community that were very critical of the decision that was made at our last board meeting concerning the textbooks. There were William and Mary faculty. I heard from a number of older students who no longer had children in the school, but felt it was very, very important that students be exposed to and, and use the best kinds of material available so that they can learn about the country, because those are the, those are the individuals who are going to be in charge of it later on. And I was actually surprised at that, but that, I, I heard that a number of times. I think, I will just read one other, one line that I also found in that foreword. And one thing I, this is a little, not off topic, but I must, I'll tell you, one thing about the cover. I was in that business for thirty-five years. I had textbooks that I wrote, and I, and they were published. And the very last thing that is determined on a textbook is the cover. And authors hardly have any knowledge of what that cover's going to look like until it actually comes out. So, it's really the publisher, generally, that makes that decision. The major message, I'm just quoting from that preface, the major message that we convey in this book is that politics and government matter to everyone.
Government in America.
Title of the book. Explains how policy choices make a difference and shape the kind of country in which we live. We will show you how these choices affect the taxes we pay, the wars we fight, quality of our environment, and many other critical aspects of our lives. And I, I end with just one other quote from, from another book. When history becomes only a celebration of the good and greats among us, it is not believable. And when history is only a story of the bad things that Americans have done to others, it's just plain depressing. On the one hand, if American history can be the story of those who fought back against injustice, who organized to win new rights, who found ways to build a better society, then our students can ask, why not me? And I believe that such a history of people who make a difference in the past can lead today's students in your time to join the list of those who have helped build a better and a more hopeful country. So, with that, I would simply say, I'm glad we returned to these four titles, and I very much support the adoption of four, four titles.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Let me, before I, I think, answer a question or respond to a question, and then offer some comments, let me first say that, sitting back and listening to my colleagues, I'm really thankful and grateful that this wasn't on the agenda, it finds its way on the agenda, we can do this, have this conversation, discourse, in the civil and respectful way that it has up to this point. So, I'm really grateful for that. And, and my comments, I, you know, I, I might end up saying something that comes across as harsh or strong, but please don't take that as personal. I would, I would ask that you take it as a, as a challenge, as board colleagues and as leaders in this community. Let me first start off by why it wasn't on the agenda, why it wasn't on the agenda. So, yes, Ms. Hummel sent an email, and Dr. Heron also sent a separate email. And I had committed to them and to the board that I would reach out to each board member in due time, and, and get an understanding from each board member on their level of their desire to see these conversations continue, to see the books, and any number of books returned to an agenda, if that's something that the board in total wanted to see. And so, as I was doing that, of course, days are going on. We had a policy committee, and that's been mentioned already, that did meet, I believe it was the Tuesday before the agenda planning meeting between myself, Dr. Heron, and Dr. Beers. There was a lot that had been uncovered in the meeting two weeks ago, and then days leading up to policy committee meeting, that really shed light on some of the challenges and, and lack of adherence to policy and, and potentially procedures, regulations that the division has with respect to textbook adoption and, and the buildup of committees. And then it wasn't until that committee actually met, the policy committee met, that further questions were brought to light, and in particular, we've got this policy, and it's been stated several times already, and we are not adhering to this policy. And yes, we have not been, as a board and as previous boards, adhere to IIIAA, to the letter of the, the policy for many, many years. But not doing so now, though we, now that we know, and we can't just sit back and say, well, this is the way it's always been done. I believe we have a responsibility to adhere to policy as best as we can as leaders in this community. And so, I kept it off the, the, the agenda for this evening, because there's work to be done. And in fact, on the agenda, it was a recommendation that we would also bring three of the policies related to the textbook committee adoption process. And those three policies were also kept off tonight's agenda, because we just aren't ready. And I spoke with Ms. Hummel, and I spoke with Ms. Young and Ms. Ordigo, if she would can, need to continue to serve.
You didn't speak to your vice chair. We never talked about this.
I spoke with Ms. Hummel, you'll let me finish my thought, you'll understand where I'm going. Right? I spoke with Ms. Hummel, and Ms. Young, and Ms. Ordigo, in relation to their work on the policy committee. And what I asked them to do is take it slow. There were eleven policies, and three were brought to the, to the agenda planning meeting, and three were taken off, because we just weren't ready. There were too many questions that were still left unanswered. And my perspective, it's akin to putting the cart before the horse, especially when we know that there are gaps and flaws, and, and we're missing the mark in adhering to policy and, and our own adopting textbooks with where it relates to the policy committee, excuse me, the, the textbook review committee being established outside of policy. Is this the cleanest way, or would the cleanest way be not doing it yet? And she did state, in my hearing, that the cleanest way was to not do it yet. But if we needed to, if there were exigent purposes and circumstances, i.e. end-of-year spending dollars, that she would recommend suspending policy. And the challenge that I prefaced my, my comments with, that I want to get to now, is that I do truly believe that for this board to suspend a policy in this way, it's a manipulation of the system. It's just that, it's a manipulation of the system. And doing so flies in the face of everything I actually heard from, I think, all but one board member this evening. Everyone, nearly everyone spoke about transparency. That's something we've always cared about. That's something we hang our hat on, and that, we, we believe we, we are a great division, because we strive to be transparent. And when we do this, just because we can suspend policy, we're flying in the face of that duty that we've, we've, we've striven to honor. I think it lacks integrity. And for that reason, I am not in favor, I will not vote to, to, in the affirmative, to suspend policy, and I will not vote in the affirmative for these textbooks. I believe the will of the board was what it was in our last meeting, and our policy committee, and our senior-level staff, we just have work to do. And by the way, on that, myself and Ms. Hummel, we talked about the umpteen other policies that are outside of our policy that says they're reviewed five years.
Is that stated anywhere? I don't think it is. No, that's just best practice, it's not stated anywhere, no.
Well, we'll have to confirm that, but we don't, we need to get out of this space where we're looking at policies twenty years later. Right? We've got work to do. And I'm pleased to work with this board to make sure that we don't have to have this discussion like this ever again, based on policy. So, that's what I wanted to share. I'll offer anybody an opportunity to respond to anything you've heard, add additional comments, or we can move on. Ms. Ordigo.
I just want to add one additional comment that I, that I neglected to say earlier, and that is that I want to echo something Mrs. Young said, which is that I do not see this as a disregard for the teachers' and staff's time and expertise. I value that highly. I think that that input doesn't have to be done over. And I just wanted to make that clear, that this isn't saying that they, their expertise should be replaced by someone else's expertise. So, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo.
So, if they were working on the policy, as you said, that was updated, and the vote still came out, I'm, I'm seeing it as two different things, though. I'm trying to wrap my brain around how that, something they found out after the fact affects the textbooks, but.
But, you know, to answer that in, in a different way.
Right.
We voted last meeting to approve science textbooks, and we shouldn't have. And so, we, we actually put ourselves in legal jeopardy, from what our attorney has told us.
Yeah, no, not legal jeopardy, that's not correct term. So, let's just.
It could be challenged by a parent.
A parent could petition the court.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so let's, yeah, let's be careful.
Courts deal with legal matters. So, that's why I say legal jeopardy. Okay. All right, we'll move on to item eight point zero one, approval of personnel actions.
Chair, I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel? Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye.
Item eight point zero two, approve amendment of superintendent's contract. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amended superintendent contract as presented effective May 2022.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye, and I think your mic cut out, that was an aye from Mrs. Young.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item eight point zero three, a motion to suspend application of policy IIIAA, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to suspend application of policy IIIAA textbook selection and adoption for tonight's meeting.
I can see it. Thank you, Ms. Cook, is there a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few remarks. I just, in response to the conversation we had a little bit earlier, I just want to be crystal clear that the most transparent way to move forward today was to fulfill the will of the majority of the board, which would have been to include these items on tonight's agenda. So, I just want to be really clear about that. I also want to state that, because this is a motion, and not about suspending rules, but actually suspending application of a policy, it requires a majority vote, not a two-thirds vote, and I checked with the attorney on that. I also want to just say that the time-sensitive nature of this is just part of the annual cycle. And when we talked about the budget a, a, a few meetings ago, I actually asked for a little bit more transparency about what gets left on the cutting room floor, if you will, because I think then that's transparent about what ten months later is going to come back. So, this is just a very normal cycle, where you, you know, you rush to make a budget, then you go through ten months, and then the last two months, it's kind of a, a speed to the end. And so, so this probably would have been on the list, and I think we can be a little bit better about transparency to the public and to the board about what might come up in the last two months of the year. But this is just a very normal part of the cycle. And I, and I want to commend Dr. Heron, and Ms. Young, and the rest of the staff for, for managing that process beautifully. And so, and then also, I just want to speak to the policy, we've said tonight a couple times that we didn't follow the policy. I read that policy, I've read it a lot, and I think we're consistent with it. The calendar committee, textbook committees, the board is aware of who's on those committees, they're asked to serve on the committee, they work with the superintendent and the chair to pick of those of us who volunteer, who serves on it. So, I, I am comfortable not even approving this motion, I will, because the attorney says it protects the board. So, I support this, because the attorney says it protects the board. But I just want to be clear, I am completely comfortable that we've been following our policy. I read that policy, and I think that we, we do support the, the, the committee that reviews these. Now, could the policy be cleaned up? Should, yes. Should we have waited twenty years to clean it up? No. But, you know, one hundred and forty million dollar organization, two thousand employees, you know, twelve thousand plus kids, you know, three hundred policies, pandemic, you know, things. I would like to see ten policies come through, through a month, so that we can really look at every single policy every five years, not to mention what the General Assembly hands us every year. I know Ms. Bujoir gets the pleasure of dealing with a lot of those every year, but I, I read that policy, and I don't think we're inconsistent with it. And I just want to say that publicly. I think staff has done a great job with textbook selection, and so, I just am frustrated that there's this narrative out there that, you know, sort of alarm bells are being rung, that we didn't follow our policy, because I don't think that's universally true. I think reasonable people could disagree about it, think we could clean things up, but I don't think we're in clear violation of a policy, I just want to say that. So, I intend to vote for this, but I just wanted to share those remarks.
Others? I, I simply think that if we, we take action to bend a policy that suits our needs, when we feel like we need to, in this manner, that we really shouldn't have policies in the first place. Right? And so, we've got to, we've got to elevate ourselves in a manner in which we're, we're operating in an honorable way with respect to our responsibilities.
I call the question.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Okay. All right. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Hummel?
Aye.
Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
No.
Mrs. Young?
No.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
No. So, policy IIIAA has been suspended, and we need to then talk about how long this is going to be suspended.
The motion said for the meeting.
Did it say for the meeting? I missed that part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. All right. Item eight point zero four, as I follow this. As I follow this. Uh, move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of Virginia Studies textbook, Our Virginia, Past and Present, Third Edition, from Five Ponds Press for a total cost of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and the associated budget transfer. Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the Virginia Studies textbook, Our Virginia, Past and Present, Third Edition, from Five Ponds Press for a total cost of forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ten and the associated budget transfer.
Thank you, Ms. Hum- Hummel, excuse me. Ms. Hummel, is there a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Discussion? We're all talked out. Okay. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
No.
Mrs. Young?
No.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Excuse me. No. Excuse me. I'm moving on.
It was no. Thank you. Item eight point zero five, and please help me if I'm getting these numbers mixed up. I think we're on eight point zero five. Thank you. Uh, move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP US History textbook, By the People, A History of the United States, Second Edition, 2019, from Savas for a total cost of thirty-eight thousand seventy-six dollars and eighteen cents, the associated budget transfer. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve, approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP US History textbook, By the People, A History of the United States, Second Edition, 2019, from Savas for a total cost of thirty-eight thousand seventy-six dollars and eighteen cents and the associated budget transfer.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Aye.
Dr. Beers, thank you. Opportunity for discussion. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
No.
Mrs. Young?
No.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook? Mr. Dowell?
No. Item eight point zero six, move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP US Government Politics textbook, Edwards et al., Government in America, AP Edition, Eighteenth Edition, 2020, Presidential Election 2022, from Savas for a total cost of thirty-two thousand fifty dollars and fourteen cents and the associated budget transfer. Is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request.
Dr. Beers, I don't believe that you can make this motion.
I'm the only one that can make it.
What?
I'm the only one that can make it because. Okay, I move to approve, uh, the request for adoption and purchase of the AP Government and Politics textbook, Edwards et al., Government in A- America, AP Edition, Eighteenth Edition, 2020, Presidential Election 2022, from Savas for a total cost of thirty-two thousand fifty dollars and fourteen cents and the associated budget transfer.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Beers, thank you. Discussion?
I wanted to say one more thing. Just I forgot to say this with the cover. I went to a rally, um, and it was Heal the Nation, Heal Williamsburg Rally. And I went because my children were going and I wanted to make sure they were safe. And I had a sign that said, if you don't see color, you don't see me, because I don't like when people say they're colorblind or they don't see color. Because that, what they really mean to say is I don't, um, judge people by the color of skin. But there were people at that, uh, rally that had I Can't Breathe masks on. Somebody had a Black Lives Matter, um, poster. If anyone had taken a shot of that picture, and I was on, on the, um, an organization I'm in coming to the table, I was on, in the crowd on a picture. Somebody would have thought that was a protest or whatever, but it was Heal Williamsburg, Heal the Nation. And because other people had different things, it was their First Amendment right to say that they wanted to be heard or whatever the case. I would have hated if I was judged as that was a bad rally or something I was at. But I just wanted to say that. I meant to say that when I was looking at that. You can't always look at something and think it was a negative thing. That was a very powerful thing. We got a resolution and the city even did something now where we got, got reparation talks and things like that. So I just forgot to say that before I saw it in my notes, so I can check that off.
Any, any other comments? Ms. Ortego?
Just want to say, I think we've had two completely separate debates surrounding this issue, so that's all.
I think we're ready, Ms. Aller.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
No.
Mrs. Young?
No.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
No. Thank you. And then item eight point zero seven, move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP Economics textbook, Principles of Economics, Ninth Edition, 2022, from Cengage for a total cost of ten thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents and the associated budget transfer. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the request for adoption and purchase of the AP Economics textbook, Principles of Economics, Ninth Edition, 2022, from Cengage for a total cost of ten thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents and the associated budget transfer.
Ms. Hummel? Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that to Ms. Cook. All right. Discussion? Uh, Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego?
No.
Mrs. Young?
No.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
No. Okay. Well, again, thank you for, uh, the respect that we've been able to show each other over this, uh, evening and, uh, for the work that you've all done to get up to speed with what we're actually going to potentially discuss this evening. Uh, and by that, I'm talking to Ms. Hunley, Ms. Hummel, the, the efforts you've taken to get out there and put your hands on these books. Thank you for that. Board member comments. Can I start with Ms. Young?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Ms. Cook?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, um, enjoyed visiting Laurel Lane Elementary and Clarebird Baker Elementary, uh, with Ms. Hunley recently. And I also was a little silent on some of the staff presentations tonight, but, um, it didn't mean, I felt like I'd said enough words tonight, so I just wanted to say I do appreciate, um, everything that was presented to us. And again, I want to reiterate that, um, I think it would be great if, um, I know it's a lot of work for staff. I know we have hundreds of policies, but the last time I did the math, I, when I was on the committee with, with, um, uh, Ms. Young, you know, we did learn, I think at NSBA or VSB that best practice is to review policies, um, every five years. And you divide all the policies we have by five years and it was something like trying to get 10 through a month. Um, and so that's a heavy lift, but I think, um, our recent experience in looking at policies isn't, this isn't the first time we've seen a policy that's two decades old. Um, just tells us that we really need to start, you know, accelerating that, even though it's a lot of work, because it is one of our biggest responsibilities. And I think we just need to be really intentional about that as a board and make it maybe a bigger priority coming out of the pandemic. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Hummel?
I do respect all of, all of you. I, um, really, uh, I do, I know you said, Mr. Chair, don't apologize, but I do want to apologize. I want to apologize for all the confusion that the last couple of weeks have brought about. Uh, because as Ms. Ortego said, there's a policy issue here and then there's a textbook issue. There's two sort of different things going on. And I've, I've always been, um, consistent on the policy decision. Uh, and I was surprised by the cover of the textbook. So, which ended up throwing, I think, everything into a, a big confusing mess. So I, I do want to apologize for any part that I had in the surprise of all this and how, how it has all evolved. It's, uh, not something that I wanted to happen. Uh, and so I do want to just say I appreciate all of the board members. I appreciate the superintendent and all the work she's done. And I appreciate the textbook committees and all the hard work that they did. And I didn't want, um, my momentary, uh, surprise to negate the hard work that the textbook committee had performed on these four books. And I wanted to correct that and, and trying to correct it, uh, immediately. And then later with, with my conversation with you, it ends up having to evolve into what happened tonight. And so, uh, it is messy and I apologize for that. On a good note, I went to see Lafayette High School's, um, production of Guys and Dolls. And that was fabulous and it was such a joy to be able to see musical theater back in our schools after two years and to see the immense talent that our students have to work together to, in the choreography and the singing and the acting. And I only wish I had been able to go see War Hill and Jamestown as well. Jamestown was the same weekend and I, I couldn't fit it in. But I just wanted to say, um, congratulations to all the area high schools and middle schools for just putting on some incredible, uh, entertainment for our community and all of the talent that we have with our children that's been kind of bottled up for two years. So I'm glad to see it out in, in public for everyone to admire.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Ortego?
Um, I just want to mention Teacher Appreciation Week. We do, we certainly do appreciate all of our current teachers, all of our former teachers who are now staff, um, and, uh, all the incredible work that they do every day. Um, I appreciate it as a parent of, um, children that are in our schools and, um, and as a citizen and as a school board member. So thank you to all of our teachers. Um, I want to, um, highlight something that occurred, um, in our high schools, um, last week, I believe, um, which was, uh, through the Twenty-First Century Career Ready Advisory Committee. They successfully held, um, a very large scale, it's very ambitious, um, sort of pilot, but it was successful, uh, mock interviews through, for, um, high school students involving, uh, lots of people from our whole community. Um, they solicited volunteers from business and, um, from all over our town and our division, um, to help conduct this. And over 550 students in the economics and personal finance class of all three high schools participated in mock interviews. It was incredible that they, this was the first, you know, they just, first time they tried it and it was very successful. Um, over a hundred employer and community representatives served as interviewers, representing 30 local employers. Overwhelming positive feedback from interviewers, students and teachers, um, working with employers regarding follow-up as some have possible part-time postgraduate and work-based learning opportunities for students. So some of these, um, interviews may actually lead to real jobs, which would, which is amazing. Um, and I hope this continues. Uh, going forward, this will be an annual event for economics and personal finance students, um, ensuring that all students have this opportunity before they graduate. So just kudos to, um, all the staff, uh, all the teachers, all the, um, community members that volunteered their time. Um, because this is, is a really great example of, of a community coming together. It does take a village and this is a great example of that. Um, so, yeah. Oh wait, I'm, no, wait, hold on, sorry. I had.
Go for it.
I had two more. I forgot. I just closed it this one. I, um, I too, I had to be out of town for a family event this weekend. So I was very sad because I, I really wanted to go to both, um, both the shows at Jamestown and Lafayette. But I did hear rave reviews from many friends. I saw many Facebook posts. Just blown away by Beauty and the Beast and Guys and Dolls. And so congratulations to all of our students, um, who participated in that, not just the actors and actresses, but there's a lot of behind-the-stage and set design and costume design and band. I think there was live band in the band pit, um, at least at one of them, maybe both. Um, so musicians, actors, teachers, everyone, um, again, great, great community success story. And then I just wanted to add one more comment on, on policy. I, I don't, we do need to re, ha, come up with a system to review everything periodically in a, in a way that makes sense. However, we don't have to review hundreds of policies in order to maybe check the policy that is going to apply to something as important as a textbook review before we engage in it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Ortego. Ms. Hunley?
Now, I want to thank the textbook committee people, um, also signing up for the policy, for the textbook review. I don't want the grass to grow under our feet. I think we need to get on that right away. Um, and also, um, again, I'll just say if we can contact the distributor, I would like to know how that goes. Second, I did go to Beauty and the Beast and just so that I know in the future to bring money, because in order to get Belle to kiss, or the beast to kiss the Belle, you had, well, they had a rose that you could light up, but I didn't have any money to buy the rose. Enough people had the roses, so they still did kiss. So, but, or, or they do this thing where I didn't know, they, they had a minute, you had to put your money in a bag. And, and I felt bad because it was a great play and I couldn't put any money in the bag. So just for the future, if you, some schools do that. Second, um, I did go to Clarebird Baker. My, that was my old stomping grounds. That's when I first came here. And I, just kudos to the art teacher. You can't.
Oh, my gosh.
Be in that building and not walk out of there feeling like you're on cloud nine with joy in your heart. Um, I am making my rounds now to the athletics. I'm done with all the plays. Trying to, um, familiarize myself with sports because I only cheered, so I don't know about other things. But I'm trying to pop in there and thank you, Kira, for your Jamestown jacket, so I can wear that. Because I'm trying not to be just totally Lafayette because I have a child there, but I, I am War Hill and, um, Jamestown supporter too.
I can give you my War Hill t-shirt.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Teacher Appreciation Week, I just wanted you to know that Teach for Tomorrow students, I read them the book, um, A Letter to My Teacher. They were, they had to write letters to their teachers. Um, they made gift bags. So I know they went in all the teachers' boxes and I wanted to just thank the students for, for helping me out with that. And I want to say thank you to central office staff that's always here with us. And, um, on behalf of the board, we put goodie bags on your table. So Mr. Keever, we say thank you. Dr. Worley's not here, thank you. Mr. Walker, thank you. Ms. Aller, thank you. Mr. Baker, thank you. Ms. Ewing, thank you. Uh, Mr. Landers, happy birthday and thank you. Mr. Snipes, thank you. And Ms. Bujhwa, thank you. It does take a village from top to bottom and bottom to top. And we, you hang in there with us and I don't know if you always get your, um, kudos. I'm sure Dr. Heron probably does something for y'all at central office and we might not know about it. But if she, if she tops that, then it's well deserved. But thank you. That's all the comments I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Dr. Beers?
Uh, yeah, I would also, uh, like to commend the Lafayette, um, uh, theater group out there. Guys and Dolls was, um, uh, it's not an easy show to do. There's an awful lot of dialogue in that and I was just, as I always am, I'm always amazed at the quality, uh, of our, um, high school students when they, when they perform incredible voice. The dance routines were, I, I mean, they were. They were, it was incredible. They, it was, it was, uh, um, it wa, it was a, an, an experience that I will not forget for a long time. It was really wonderful. And I had other conflicts, so I wasn't able to go to the other, um, uh, performances, but I know that they were just as good as well. The only other thing I would say is, um, is what actually happened tonight in a, in a, it's a microcosm. It is democracy. Um, it is messy. We know that we don't always get it right. Um, but we had discussion. We brought things, something forward. We voted, which is very much in line, um, with, uh, how our government operates and, and, uh, and the majority, um, won. And the only other thing I, I, I would say is, um, and it really came through to me in a, in a piece that I read, but I've seen it other places as well. And that's the recognition that while parents are very important and, and have very much, um, they should have a voice in public education. Public education is public and it belongs to everyone, not, not just the parents. It bel, it belongs to other taxpayers. It belongs to older people whose children are long gone from school. It belongs to everybody. Um, and, uh, while we, we hear more from the, um, parent voices, which is perfectly fine, um, it's important to remember that there are other voices out there as well, um, that deserve to be heard and, um, and I heard from a lot of them. I have to, uh, I have to admit. But, um, other than that, um, I, that, that, I conclude my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Dr. Heron, you had something to share?
Just one quick comment. Um, this has been a challenging conversation tonight around policy. And you have, uh, my total commitment to accelerating our review of policies. Um, we do have a pattern. We do have a plan and we're moving through them and we have been, uh, for the past several years. One to accelerate, one to look at the oldest first, one to look at the ones that are likely to impact our decisions, uh, that are coming up and at any particular time. uh, that are coming up and at any particular time of the year. But you have my word that we will make it a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, and, and, uh, we're ready to do the work. So thank you. Uh, working alongside you, that is. I wanted to, um, offer condolences to the Westmoreland family. I, uh, can't imagine what you're going through and dealing with, and, uh, I doubt you're even listening to all this, but if it gets back to you, just know that, um, this board cares. The division has lost a family member, and, uh, I'll be praying for your family. I know there, there are many thoughts and prayers that are going out to your family in this hard time. Um, I don't have much more to say than that. I'm pleased that we can be about people. I'm pleased that, uh, our discussion was about ultimately, uh, what's right for our community. And we agree and disagree, and again, I just, I'm pleased that we can do it in a simple manner, uh, with respect for one another and a different viewpoint. Um, let's keep it about people. Yeah. Um, let's move on to upcoming events. And we're looking busy. May 5th, uh, at 5:15 at Matoka Woods Room at the School of Education, William &amp; Mary, is the 2022 Teacher of the Year reception. I'm pleased to, to have that on my calendar. I'll be there to celebrate all the wonderful accomplishments of our teachers and our Teacher of the Year. Um, on the 11th of May, at Legacy Hall Newtown, 3:30 PM, the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee is going to be meeting. Uh, on the 12th of May at 6:30, um, Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting at the Rex Center, Room D. Uh, the Policy Committee, Policy Committee meeting, May 19th, 8:30 AM, virtually. All right. School Liaison Committee meeting on the 25th of May, 8 AM, Room 300. Student Advisory Committee meeting on the same day, the 25th of May at 3 PM, at the Lafayette High School Media Center. And the, uh, WJCC retirement ceremony to be held May 31st at 5 PM at Matoka Woods, again, School of Education at William &amp; Mary. Um, upcoming meetings. Close session and regular meeting on the 17th of May at James Blair Middle School. Uh, closed session here, and then regular meeting at the gymnasium. And then on the 7th of June, 6:15 and 6:45. And this is to allow board members to participate in that days, that evenings or afternoons, however you want to look at it. Um, uh-
Graduation parade?
Yeah, graduation, did you?
No, no, I just-
Okay.
That's soon.
Yeah, it's soon, yes. Um, so the plan, I guess, for us is to meet here, get on a bus, go to the front of the graduation parade and cheer on our new graduates, then head back over here in time for a 6:15 start to our close session. And then 6:45 start time for the, uh, the work session. Um, I also wanted to say before we, uh, move on, um, that I appreciate our community coming out at 4:30 to come and share their perspectives, and, um, we, we, we did see, um, some good diverse, um, representation of, of perspectives, uh, regarding everything that was shared today. So I appreciate you guys coming out, um, a, at that early hour, and just know that you're heard and you are appreciated. And on that note, I can imagine that we have a lot of emails. So, uh, bear with us, bear with me as, uh, I tackle many of those this evening, and you will be, you will be responded to. So I just wanted to add that. Um, agenda items are set for the next regular meeting, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.